Thank you, good evening. This is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen February 22nd. All selectmen are present. If you would all join me, I will ask Mr. McCoy to start us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We'll start with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 33, 33A, 34, and 34A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We have a few sets of minutes to approve. The meeting of February 23rd, September 14th of 2015, November 9th of 2015, and November 23rd of 2015. I would accept a motion to take them all unless there is someone that would like to take them up individually.
I was staying from the meeting of February 23rd because you had to deal with my restaurant that night, I believe.
Okay, that being said, then why don't we take them up individually? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 23rd?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Four and one abstain. Motion, accept a motion for September 15th, 2015.
I move, actually if-
September 14th.
If nobody else has any other issues with them, I'd actually move to approve September 14th, 2015, November 9th, 2015, and November 23rd, 2015, as presented.
Second.
I'll accept that motion and a second. Is there further discussion? I see none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. One moment. Let's jump right into our 7 o'clock appointment, which is with Mr. Brian Kane, the Vice President of Wilmington Little League, to request and conduct a parade on Saturday, April 16th, from the Town Common to Rotary Park in conjunction with opening day ceremonies. Mr. Kane?
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for being here. I see you have help this evening.
Yes, I brought my spokesperson, as usual.
Great.
Again, thanks for having us tonight. We're here to request a date of April 16th for the annual Wilmington Little League Parade, and Hayden's going to give you a few details on that.
So, once again, good evening, and tonight we're here to request the opening day parade and ceremonies, and it'll start at the 4th of July Building at promptly 9:30, and we'll proceed down Middle Sixth Ave and end at Rotary Park where we will host, once again, our opening day ceremonies and opening day game. The Kiwanis will once again be serving hot dogs, and it's really just a great experience for players, coaches, and the town.
Nice job. That's great, thank you. Anything further there?
And we, you know, as usual, we appreciate the support of the sport and the town manager. You know, you're always there, and you all have ties to the league in some way, shape or form over the years, so it's just turned into a great event and a great tradition.
It is indeed, thank you. Mr. Hall, any conflicts with the date at all?
No conflicts.
Excellent. Is there a rain date that you've put aside, or is it rain or shine?
We hope it doesn't rain. The following Saturday, we have pitcher day, so it couldn't be that day. I think if it was rained out, we might try for that next day, the 17th.
Okay.
If possible, but hopefully it won't rain.
It never rains on opening day, so we'll just presume that to be the case. Nicely done. I would open it up to the board here for any comments or questions. Mr. Newhouse?
Given the concise but thorough presentation, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Smaglin.
Great, nice job, as always.
Thank you.
Indeed, yeah. Mr. McCoy?
You know, your dad always does a great job, and all the other dads and the moms that help out during these festivities, it means a lot. Volunteerism is wonderful in town, and you got a great father.
Thank you very much for being here, I always look forward to having you come in. I was thrilled when I saw it, I was hoping that you'd be here, Hayden, to help your dad with the presentation, so thank you for that. I have no issues with it, but would we want to include in the motion any sort of contingency for a rain date, subject to the town manager's approval, or something of the sorts, they don't have to come back?
There's no issue that we would have on Sunday, so.
I would agree, I think it's worthwhile.
Well, it can't be that specific Sunday, but you had mentioned the 17th, is that what you had said?
The 17th, the next day, that Sunday, it couldn't be the following Saturday.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
The next day, Sunday the 17th, as a contingency.
Right.
Which you won't need.
Hopefully not.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I just didn't want you to have to obviously come back, so.
Yes, so lastly, I just want to state kind of what Mr. McCoy said, you know. Hayden, nice job presenting, like Mr. Newhouse said, very concise and to the point and very clear, I appreciate that. Really want to pay compliments to all of the parents, whether they volunteer on teams as coaches, or really just getting the kids back and forth to the games, it's a community effort. Little League is such a great tradition in this town, and I'm so delighted that this parade is back on our radar screen. It's a great way to start off the new year, so thank you for bringing this to us, it's a nice way to start the meeting as well, so it's good news. I would accept a motion.
Move to grant the request.
Motion is made and seconded, is there further discussion? All in favor then? Unanimous.
And just one last thing, excuse me, just on a personal note, you know, I just wanted to thank Mike and Lou for your service to the town over the years you've been on the board. I think you've made, you know, town a better town for your service on this board, too.
Thank you, I appreciate the kind word.
Hayden might be up there someday.
Not in two years, though, Hayden.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
That is indeed a nice way to start the meeting. Our scheduled 7:10 appointment is with Teresa Marchiello, Director of Elderly Services, to update us regarding programs that are happening with the Elderly Services Center. Is Teresa here?
She may not be.
She may not be, all right. Do you, how do you, we can jump to, do you want to go to Communications or jump down to the 7:20 and do the, because I do see Nancy's in the room.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll jump ahead here and we'll let Teresa make her way in, and if that's okay with you, Nancy, we'll introduce you now. Our scheduled 7:20 appointment, which is going to be done now, is with Nancy Valley, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce with regards to the Chamber of Commerce scholarships, and a request to conduct the town's annual, Wilmington 12th Annual, I'm sorry, Half Marathon and 5K Walk Run, which will be in September 25th. Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening, how are you?
Very well, thanks for being here.
Fortunately, I don't have a little cute spokesperson for me, but thank you. On behalf of the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, I am here to, once again, request permission for the Chamber of Commerce to host this year's Wilmington's 12th Annual Half Marathon and 5K Road Race. The race this year would take place on Sunday, September 25th, the same location, 10 Waltham Street, at the WCTV parking lot, same time, from 10 to 2 p.m. This event, as you all know, attracts many out-of-town racers and running clubs, as well as athletes from our Wilmington schools and community. The Chamber took over coordination of this road race seven years ago, and our business community now is involved in the road race, and through our sponsorships, we allow them to set up booths at the road race, which really add to the fun and festivity of the race itself. So just a few stats from last year, we had 500 athletes participate in either the half marathon, the 5K run, or the 5K walk, which was actually down over prior years. We typically have about 100 spectators at the race site, 27 local businesses set up booths, encouraging our bi-local spending, and we typically do about 50 high school students that volunteer, either directly through myself or the Rotary Interact Club, earning their community service hours. Proceeds from last year's race allow us to award six scholarships this coming June to graduating seniors, and we also use a portion of the proceeds from last year's race to purchase bi-local doormats for our Chamber members this past holiday season to encourage, again, the bi-local spending. Also, we really want to, this year, give back to the Wilmington Police Department, so we will be making a donation in August in sponsoring their National Night Out. In addition to the Wilmington Police Department, the town itself, so many departments within the town and organizations, and, you know, you folks have always been huge supporters of our road race, and working together, we always ensure a safe event for all.
Nice.
Thank you, Nancy, that's, again, well articulated and summarized. I will just, I'll let the town folk know that I am, I sit as a member of the Board of Directors on the Chamber of Commerce, so when it does come time to vote, as I have done in many years that this has, since the race has been on, I will recuse myself from voting on the approval of the race, but I'll take personal privilege now and just simply say that the race has been, through the cooperation of the Police Department and so many other departments around town, DPW, it has been a tremendous success. I think every attendee has indeed expressed that it has become a must-run or a must-walk race for them each year on the circuit, as it were, and it certainly has been a source of funds for the Chamber of Commerce that have been allocated to some great programs, including scholarship for Wilmington students. So, this is, it's a great event, and I guess I offer that to my colleagues when it's time to vote, I hopefully you'll support it, but certainly Nancy, thank you for being here this evening and summarizing that. I want to open it up for any comments or questions from the board, so I'll run over to my left to Ms. O'Connell.
Sure. Nancy, thank you very much for being here tonight, as always, you always do a fantastic job in any event, and I know you work collectively with your team, it's always enjoyed to have you in here, shining spirit and bright light in the community, and you do so much for so many people, so I certainly, wholeheartedly, support this. Aside from just the goals and initiatives that you do about the scholarships, I think it's important to also mention what this does for people and families that are trying to memorialize and commemorate special people in their lives, so it's about the giving on the first level that you talked about, which is critically important, but I think it's also, certainly deserves public recognition, to highlight what this does for people and families in this town that want to remember people that they've lost, or people that are, want to be memorialized in some way or celebrated in some way, so thank you for doing that.
I think Judy really said it all and said it really nicely, the only thing I can say is, you know, appreciate what you do, and just like the gentleman from Little League, volunteerism means a lot in this community, and, once again, we have a lot of volunteers doing things, and it says a lot, speaks volumes. Thank you.
Mr. Smaglin?
I can't believe it's been seven years.
Well, it's been 12 years for the race itself, seven years, yes.
Seven years for the Chamber, but, yeah, it's all been said, the wonderful work that you all do is through your organization, and that day is greatly appreciated throughout the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just add to what's been said by simply saying thank you for the hard work and for putting on, you know, such a successful event, and good luck with it this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, any recommendations or conflicts at all on the date?
No conflicts, so we're good to run.
So to speak.
Touche.
Very well, so that said, I would accept a motion to approve Ms. Valley's request.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? I see none, all in favor? Four in favor and one recused.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
So we'll backtrack a little bit because I see Terry's in the back of the room now, so our 7:10 scheduled appointment is with Teresa Marchiello, Director of Elderly Services, to update us regarding programs at the senior center.
Hi.
Good evening, Terry, how are you?
Hi, how are you? Sorry for the confusion of time.
Not at all.
Thank you very much for asking me to, or allowing me to come and speak tonight. I thought it'd be a great opportunity to just kind of fill you in on a few things that are happening in the Department of Elderly Services. If you remember, setback last year, I think I spoke last year on a certain campaign that we were doing, it was Spring Into, 48 Days to Spring Into Happiness, and so we did a campaign, and for the reason is, January, February are like the worst months for a lot of people, but to get out of the doldrums and kind of make it something happy. So we had that last year, and we were only going to do it for a couple of months, and it went so well, we had the smiley faces and that type of thing, that we carried it throughout the year. So in saying that, we felt that, seeing as it did so well last year, we really had to think of a theme for this year, and in looking back at what all the organizations, departments, yourselves have done for the department, we thought it'd be a great time to give back, so that's the theme for this year. We're on the track to giving back. So how did we do that? So we, the seniors that come to the center were able to sign a ticket, and it says, "I'm on board to giving back for 2016." Then in turn, they got it, have a ticket, they get to carry with them, and it punches out any opportunity, as I'll share with you further, different things that we have, they get to punch out a hole, and showing as to they took part in this activity. Then at the end of the year, there's a raffle, and it sounds like something very basic and simple, and it is, but at the same time, it causes enthusiasm, and makes people realize how many things we are giving back to. As in January, we were able to have the fire and police in the Public Safety Building to come in to say, and dispatch, because dispatch is just as important, to come in and say, "Thank you for everything that you do." I mean, how many people, the fire and police and dispatch go above and beyond in so many cases, we want to say thank you to them. Then in March, we'll be saying, "Thank you to you," and you'll be getting an invitation, and to the town manager, assistant town manager, the representative, and the senator. Then in May, we will be saying, "Thank you to all our volunteers." Without our department, our department would not function without the volunteers that we have, the volunteers that not only teach some of our classes, but also that make us a very active organization, including our commissioners. And then in July, we would say, "Thank you to all the departments." The great thing about this community is, all our departments work together, whether it be with the recreation, whether it be with public works, public buildings, we all work very close together, so then have the department heads come to an event to say thank you to them. Then let's see, July, August, September, we're going to say thank you to all the organizations, whether it be the Rotary, the Mason's Lodge, several of the communities, several people that the organizations have done an awful lot for us, whether it be dinners, whether it be special fundraisers, they're very supportive to us. And then in November, we can't forget the students, the students also do a phenomenal job for our department, so that the end of the year, we're hoping that we touch everybody to say thank you. So that's our theme for this year. But I also thought I'd like to share a few things that throughout last year, continuing into this year, that have been going very well. One is our men's group. We developed a men's group with the support of the case manager, Laura Pickett, who is extremely active in reaching out to the community. We found that men sometimes have a more, not to pick on men, but have a little more difficult time engaging because they've been such in the workforce, and the older generation, they were such in the workforce, that when it came time to really socializing, it's not as easy as in getting together in a group. So we started this breakfast with, for men's group, once a month, twice a month, and we thought we had around 10, 12 people. Well, now we have 32, and it's really evolved into, they've gotten to be a strong support group to one another, they've, people that are shy are no longer shy. So in saying this, that we've developed such a strong group, that we, we thought we tried to try something a little different, and we did, and we did a field trip. I'm not sure if any of, many of you know, there's a wonderful, wonderful museum, a World War II museum in Natick, Massachusetts. A gentleman took it upon himself to collect all artifacts, anything to do with World War II privately. This is not funded by anything, any government grants or anything, that he did it all privately. Well, this museum now is rather large, it started in a very small room and is now in a warehouse in Natick that is beautifully set up. We took the men there, because the majority of them are veterans, and, you know, something that we thought would take two hours, it could have taken an entire day, which then again caused more strength amongst the men, and now wanting to do more field trips, which we will be going to WCTV as a tour, so they can see, WCTV, have dinner, we're doing that next month. But that group, that's something that we started so small, has evolved into a wonderful group of gentlemen. The other thing is our intergenerational continues to evolve. We had our Valentine's luncheon just last Friday, celebrating Valentine's with Rotary Interact, they were very, very active with us, and helped serve the meal, prepare the beginning part of the meal, a great group of students. And we're very happy to say that the National Honor Society has stepped up again to do the Snow Angels. Snow Angels is the, if you remember, we, last year I had shared, one of the elders decided to name, felt that the group should be called the Snow Angels because they help with the shoveling. This year, thank goodness, we have been very fortunate so far, we still have March, that the snow has not been as difficult as it was last year, but they are, we have, I think it's around 35 students that are able to help several elders in the community. The other thing is, intergenerational, we liked, we thought that we wanted to try something a little different, we had dinner a few years back, we had a breakfast, grandparents, grandchildren breakfast, this past week, actually, Valentine's was two weeks ago, wasn't it? This past week, and for vacation week, and it was lots of fun, and we also had students from the CCD St. Thomases come and volunteer their time to help for their confirmation hours, to be able to help us serve the meal and the breakfast at the same time, did games, and everyone had a lot of fun. They got to make their own, we had made the pancakes, and you could put anything from strawberries, blueberries, chocolate chips, whipped cream, bananas, but it was fun, it was a fun day. Another thing I would like to be able to mention is, on the, going back to Laura Pickett, last year we did a program for caregivers, the tools to be a good caregiver, and that was sponsored by Minuteman Senior Services. That was a six-week program. From that program, what happened was, it developed a, these caregivers developed a strong strength with one another, and we felt that we needed to be able to continue to give a support group to them. Now we have, do have the support group that has started last month, and the goal of the support group is not only to have them support one another, but at the beginning of, it's going to be once a month, and at the beginning of that hour, there is an informational piece, whether it be an attorney, whether it be in a Delta Health, whether it be in assisted living, whether it be just different services that provided in the home to enhance the home quality of life, to be able to give more resources to these people. So that's something new that we've started this year. On something as a fun note, we've, several years back, we had a student who enticed us to start the Wii. The Wii is a wonderful game that you play on the TV, and it gets you interactive, but it doesn't, it's not, you don't have to be, you don't have to be athletic, you don't have to be, you know, be able to move all your arms and your legs, so it's really opened up the doors for, no matter how, what quality, or the capability of a person, to be able to play this game. So that was the student's thought. He started this as a volunteer project, and four years later, now we're in tournaments. So now there is a trophy going back between Reading and ourselves as to who is the better Wii player. So I have to say, last month we lost the trophy, but hopefully this month we'll be getting it back as of March. But the other thing is, it's wonderful, is that it's a senior center with senior centers, that it's just not, you know, Wilmington, that we are reaching out to other communities to be interactive with them. And the other thing that we're hoping to do is we're connecting with LL Bean in Burlington as to, reaching out to, trying to come up with new ideas, and we're going to be doing kayaking, as, and they're going to be training us to, there's a special program that LL Bean does, that they bring you out to Spot Pond to make sure that you know how to use a kayak before you buy a kayak, so I said, "Well, if they can do that, why can't they do that with us?" As in just having us use the kayaks. So they actually took the bite, and they think it's a good idea. So what we're hoping to do is to be able to develop a kayak program in the summer, which would lead into hiking in the fall, which would lead to snowshoeing in the winter. So, again, something to think out of the realm, something to be different. Yes, the Department of Elderly Services is so important to have two aspects, have programming, education, and fun at the center, and have the social services, but in order to have people to be enticed and wanting to see the department, you have to make sure you have something fun, so that kayaking thing and outdoor fun, I think, can bring that realm to it. Another thing that I would like to mention is, I was at a talk last week, and it's something that came to my attention from Emmett Shimazo, Director of, from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. And for the year 2016, this is the very first year, that in several communities, over half the communities in Massachusetts, the elders' population is higher than our children's population. And back in 2000 and before 2000, we were told that this would happen. It's happening, it's here, the wave is coming. And in saying that, I think it is so important that the town of Wilmington, we're very fortunate, all of you have been extremely supportive, all the organizations in the town, very supportive, all the departments in helping our department, very supportive, but I think it's so important that we continue, because we are seeing the wave come in now, we are seeing that our elders are outnumbering our children of coming, you know, the baby boom is growing. And in saying that, for the town of Wilmington, and looking up some statistics, I had mentioned at our Finance Committee meetings, a meeting for my department last, a couple weeks ago, that in, from the year 2, I mean, 1999, I mean, 1990 to 2020, is a 66.2% increase in the elderly population, that's a big increase. So I think in the future, it's very important for my department to be able not only to supply fund programming and, you know, seminars, and, but also for the social service piece, but also to know, to keep attuned to all those fuel assistance programs, all the social aspects of different funding programs, and being attuned to, you know, elder law is changing, elder law is evolving, and I think it's important that we keep attuned to it all and continue to be the front line, but of course, with your support that you've always given us, I don't think there'll be a problem. So that's what I had to share today.
That's awesome. Thank you, Terry, there's a lot there, clearly. I have, I've jotted down some thoughts that came to me, but I want to make sure I have the opportunity, or give the opportunity, to each of my colleagues to offer observations or questions, so I guess I'll start, I don't know, Mr. McCoy, if you want to be the first on, in line, or?
I'll just be quick, I mean, you know, Terry, you do a fantastic job, I'm going to be very sure, I'll let the other colleagues say much, much more, you do a fantastic job, the seniors down there love you, you do a great job, there's a lot of people volunteer their time, there are people that do a lot in this community, it's a great program, you're perhaps one of the best department heads out there, and it means a lot to those seniors when these things come up and you inform them, maybe free legal advice, or maybe free advice from an accountant, or an RN appears, somebody from a member of law enforcement or the fire department talking about safety, it means a lot, and those are the things that people don't see, but we see it, and it means a lot, and you do a great job.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Connell, if you, any more?
Slavko McCoy said a lot of it, but I just wanted to thank you very much for being here tonight. I think every time you're in here, I'm just in awe of the presentation that you give and how much you are actually doing, there's no, we get the reports monthly and we actually read them, and it's just amazing, you know, obviously, any community wants to be a community for all ages, and what you do is so vital and critically important, and I think what I've learned over the years, just even recently in today's world, it's, your job is a labor of love for you, but also it's evolved so much into social services and beyond, just, you know, health and wellness and programs, there's a lot more to it, we're in a different world today, in a different climate, and so you've had to evolve and adapt in your job, and I've seen that progression in the reports that you've delivered in the services, so I wanted to give you a personal compliment, and your team, that you really continue to shape the future for the seniors in this town, and it's such an incredibly valuable service that you provide, and I just think that that bears repeating and really can't be understated, so I read a lot of it, my grandmother receives the list, I keep trying to encourage her to get down there, she hasn't quite crossed the threshold into the doorway.
She's not old enough yet, right?
Yeah, 88 years young, so, but in any event, she's reading them, so even if people are not necessarily walking into your facility- if people are not necessarily walking into your facility, you are resonating with people at home, and I think that that also bears mentioning as well. So thank you for being here, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smaglia?
Yeah, agreed. Judy, Mrs. O'Connell just said it beautifully about the way the department has evolved over the past five, ten, twenty years. And I, unfortunately, I see it firsthand with the aging population of veterans that I deal with, and how you and your staff reaches out and does home visits and goes above and beyond in a lot of different ways, not just getting them at the, getting them at the senior center, but what you do in the homes is way above and beyond. So I commend you and your staff and Laura, and everybody else that's over there. Thank you.
Mr. Hoss? I think most of it's been said, and I would echo what the other members of the board have said. I guess the only other point that I would make is to hammer home the idea that you're really accommodating a vibrant segment of the community. And in terms of evolving in the way that some of the, particularly Judy and Lou have mentioned, you know, you're evolving in a manner that's enabling you to continue to offer the services that kind of traditionally and historically have been offered by your department, but you're also, you know, meeting the demands and serving the interests of people who are very active and vibrant and, you know, want to be very active in terms of enjoying their time, both at the senior center and, you know, at different locations. So I think that's, you know, very noticeable and very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Well said. I have the unenviable placement of being last to offer comments, and I can't necessarily, I can't improve on any of the good comments of my colleagues. I'll simply say thank you for coming here tonight, first and foremost, but also for all of the work that you lead at the senior center and with the senior department, but also on, if you extend that out to all of the folks that work with you, whether they are employed or volunteer, that you already said that none of this really happens without more hands in the mix doing the work, so thank them for us. I'm impressed with the quantity and the variety of the programs that you went through, and you spent several minutes talking about a myriad of programs that are going on throughout the year. And one of the things, we talk about the benefit to the seniors clearly that you are working with, but there's also a very tangible and visible benefit to all of the other organizations that engage with the seniors at the senior center, and, you know, whether that's the Rotary Interact kids that go and conduct programs, or other youth organizations, or even, you know, regular charitable organizations that come in and just spend some time, they are also the beneficiaries of the work that they're doing, just by virtue of having access to our seniors, senior members of our community. So thank you for providing that opportunity, I think it's remarkable. And I'm very impressed with the creative partnership mentality with the LL Bean philosophy. I'm anxious to see how that goes with kayaking and snow shoeing.
Yeah, we all are.
I'm not, I have a few years yet before I can consider myself a senior, but I'm looking forward to it, and I hope you're still around when I'm there, because...
Well, you need to follow us on Twitter, that's the other piece I forgot to say.
Oh, my God, the senior center has a tweet.
Oh, yes. You need to follow us on Twitter. We have quite a few things that are out there.
Hashtag senior center? Awesome. Well, thank you again very much. I don't know, Mr. Hall, if you had more to chime in there?
No, other than just, you know, Terry's enthusiasm clearly shows through, I mean, the level of work, the inventiveness of the different ideas, and also just the collaboration that goes on between Terry's department, Tina Stewart in the library, Debbie Cipriani in the rec, with the police and fire, there's, it really shows through.
Indeed, indeed. Thank you again, Terry.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We all did receive it and certainly will be responding.
Oh, good. Thank you so much.
Indeed. Look forward to that. And that brings us to our seven-thirty scheduled activity, which is a review of the annual Town Meeting warrant articles submitted by petition. And for this, I will turn over the reading of those articles to Mr. Hall.
If I may.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, I don't necessarily expect there to be any discussion about these, but in the event that there is, I'll be abstaining from that discussion.
Very well. Thank you.
So just to start, under petition articles, and I don't know if, unless it's your request to necessarily read the articles, some of them are rather lengthy, but I can certainly capsulize the articles. So the first one is an article submitted by Kenneth Clarkin and others, and this is to purchase town-owned land referenced as map thirty-six, parcel ninety-four, Fifth Street off of Nichols Street.
You know, I will interject this very briefly. This is the first opportunity here this evening where we are really just reviewing in summary the articles. There will be ample opportunity as we go forward at the joint meeting of the Planning Board and Finance Committee, which, I'm sorry, I don't have the date handy.
It's the fifteenth of March.
March fifteenth, where each one of these articles will be read in total, and opportunities for discussion will be presented to residents at that time. It'll be held here at Town Hall in the auditorium. So I want to make it clear that we're not, it's not that we're not engaging in conversation on these articles, this is really just the introduction of what the articles are. We'll have more engagement on the articles at a future date. Thank you.
The next article is submitted by Carl Martin and others, and it is to see if the town will establish a bylaw providing for the disposition of civil traffic infractions through a diversion program operated by the National Traffic Ticket Divergence Tribunal. Next, we have an article submitted by Keith and Michelle Pfeiffer. This is to purchase town-owned land at the corner of Beeching and Faulkner, it's map seventy, parcel one. Next is an article to adopt MGL Chapter Forty-One, Section Eighty-One FGH, relative to laying out alteration, relocation, discontinuance of public ways. The petitioner is Mark Nelson. We have an article to adopt Bill, House One-One Eight-One, an act relative to the safety of school grounds. The petitioner is Rosalie Di Maderos. Just to note, on this one, Town Council is looking at this, but where it is a bill from the House and has not yet been adopted into law, I think there's going to be some question as to whether that ultimately has standing at Town Meeting, but we'll, Town Council is reviewing that. We have a petitioner, Angela Zayakoviskoye, and the article is to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone from R sixty to R twenty-six Summer Street, which is off Cobalt and Salem Road, near McDonald Road. We have an article to name the corner of one thirty-six Church Street and Adams Street in the memory of William R. Harrison. And this is submitted by David Malone and others. An article to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning from R twenty to neighborhood business land at six seventy-seven Main Street, which is across from Weber Place in the Yentile Park area. This is, a property has been, is proposed to be rezoned again from R twenty to neighborhood business. Petitioner is Suzanne Kenny. An article submitted by Lawrence Cushing to seek the purchase of town-owned land on sixteen St. Paul Street, map fifty-four, parcel thirty-seven. An article to amend the zoning bylaws and associated maps by rezoning from R twenty to general business, I'm sorry, R twenty and general business to strictly general business, the entire land on three twelve Main Street. This is the Joe Barry oil property. Petitioner is Manuel Berry.
Jeff, the one there for Stephen Wright, is that the one up above?
I'm sorry.
After Suzanne Kenny and in between that one and Lawrence Cushing, the Stephen Wright one for the over fifty-five?
Oh, yes, yes. So this one is submitted by Stephen Wright, and the request is to seek to rezone property in North Wilmington for fifty-five and over. This is off of Andover Street. If you recall, a similar article was proposed last year near the Foster's Pond area. An article to amend the zoning bylaw and associated maps by rezoning from general industrial to neighborhood mixed-use zoning district property at six thirty-five Main Street. This is map forty, parcel one. The petitioner is Michael Welch and others. And then the final article under the petitioned, actually, there's two more.
Two more.
One, the next one is to amend the zoning bylaw and associated maps by rezoning from general industrial to central business district property at six thirty-five Main Street, again, map forty, parcel one. Petitioner, Michael Welch. And then the final article is submitted by Lisa Johnson and others. This is to rezone from residential sixty to residential twenty, a property that is located at one twenty-eight Aldrich Road and shown as parcel twelve on the Assessors' map nine.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I certainly want to give the opportunity for the members of the board to offer any observations or questions at this time, bearing in mind that we have the joint meeting in March where these will be talked about in detail. If there are any questions or comments, I see none, so we will continue to blaze forward. The next scheduled activity for the evening is preliminary discussion of the annual Town Meeting for the non-petition warrant articles. And again, for that, I will proceed to ask Mr. Hall to summarize those.
So the first article, as is always the case, is the notice of annual positions open for the April twenty-third, two thousand sixteen election, two selectmen seats for three-year terms, three school committee seats for three-year terms, one housing authority seat for a five-year term, and one seat on the Shawshin Tech School Committee for a three-year term. Article two is to receive reports from committees and commissions. Article three is the payment of any unpaid bills that may have occurred during the course of the year. Article four is to authorize the treasurer to enter into banking arrangements with one or more banks for a term not to exceed three years and to maintain funds on deposit in exchange for banking services. Article five is the omnibus budget article, which is essentially the town's operating budget, personnel and supplies and equipment. Article six is the capital, capital equipment and replacement article. Specifically, we're looking to purchase and replace five frontline police cruisers, and the budgeted amount is two hundred and twenty thousand, to replace one command vehicle in the fire department, price of fifty-three thousand. One ambulance, this would be a replacement, two hundred and sixty thousand, purchase one pumper, again, a replacement. This will be a borrowing of six hundred and fifty thousand. And to replace one heavy-duty dump truck at a cost of a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Replace a front-end loader at a cost of a hundred and seventy thousand. Replace a pavement roller with trailer at a cost of forty-two thousand. And to replace one student transport van, which is used by the school department, at a price of, estimated price of thirty thousand. Article, the next article is for technology. The request is for seventy-five thousand, which will include technology for the general government side, it'll include desktop replacements, network switch upgrades, and replacement of servers. Next is a, to purchase tasers for the police, police department. We have an article to purchase portable radios for the fire department. This is a replacement of existing radios. Article ten, development of intersection master plan, fifty-three thousand. This would result in prioritizing the intersections that need to be addressed next. Article eleven, engineering services, this would be a twenty-five percent design for engineering services associated with upgrades to Route Thirty-Eight from the intersection of Thirty-Eight and Sixty-Two to the Woburn Line. The price for this is three hundred and fifty-five thousand. The next article, twelve, is the relocation of an underground control panel for the pump station at the public safety buildings, a sewer pump station, be relocated to an above-ground space, cost of thirty thousand dollars. Next is a, an article to replace ten thousand four hundred and thirty-two square feet of roof at the North Intermediate School. This is the second of a three-phase roof replacement, the cost is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Next is the replacement of the entire roof at the Boutwell School, which is approximately twenty-two thousand one hundred square feet, price of four hundred and eighty thousand Article fifteen, to purchase Foundation's English Language Arts Program to implement a phonics program in the kindergarten, this cost is thirty-eight thousand. Article sixteen, to purchase Lucy Culkin's units of study for reading, this is a reading and writing literacy program, grades K to five, thirty-five thousand dollars. Article seventeen, to purchase a social-emotional learning curriculum for K to, pre-K to fifth grade, price is twenty-five thousand. Article eighteen, to purchase equipment necessary for the first phase of a multi-year voice-over IP system in the school department, a hundred thousand dollars is the price. Next is the, to upgrade computer switches in the elementary schools, the price on that is thirty-six thousand dollars. Next is article twenty, to transfer from free cash to other post-employment benefit trust fund, one million dollars. This is, continues the practice that we've engaged in for the last few years. Article twenty-one is to transfer funds from free cash to capital stabilization fund, the amount of one point five million dollars. Article twenty-two, to transfer from free cash to employment, employee retirement stabilization fund, the sum of five hundred thousand dollars. Article twenty-three, to transfer from free cash to make a direct payment to the Middlesex Retirement System, an amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Article twenty-four is a customary article, this is a so-called transfer article, to make transfers from various line items in the fiscal two thousand sixteen budget from other line items or from available funds. Article twenty-five, to appropriate a sum of money to support the July Fourth celebration, the amount would be twenty-five thousand. Article twenty-six, to appropriate funds to support Memorial Day and Veterans Day, the amount is six thousand dollars. Article twenty-seven, to appropriate funds to renew leases for the... Article 27, to appropriate funds to renew leases for the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse and the American Legion Clubhouse, total $1,500. Article 28, to authorize revolving accounts for the septic tank replacement program, the amount of a $200,000 limit, and the compost bin program with a limit of $4,500. Article 29 is to amend the zoning bylaw regarding the display of for-sale signs on up to two used vehicles. Change the existing language, which suggests that someone could have more than two used vehicles on the lot, but only up to two for-sale signs. You'll recall this came up at a discussion regarding a license for a Class II license. And so this is a clarification on the existing language in the bylaw.
So it's 29, oh, okay.
Yeah, actually, so you'll note in the draft here, there's two 29s, and that is because there was an article that was put in at the last minute, and we'll adjust the numbering here. But the first so-called Article 29 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds, a sum for the operation of a public rink enterprise. So if you recall, at the town meeting in 2014, there was a request to set up an enterprise fund. We want to continue to receive authorization to fund an enterprise fund in the event that there's an opportunity to purchase the rink during the next year. So we, obviously, things are still in a state of, well, I guess they're kind of on ice, so to speak. But there's no progress at the moment, but in the event that there's an opportunity to make a purchase, we want to have the enterprise fund established. Article 30, to authorize continued participation in the MWRA Financial Assistance Program for infiltration and inflow reduction. This is a program that we've done periodically over the last several years. Infiltration and inflow is something that can occur in our sewer lines, and we are assessed from the MWRA based upon the amount of flow, so it's clearly to our advantage to minimize that. This is a grant loan program in the amount of $218,000 that we would be seeking approval to engage in. Article 31, to authorize the board to acquire by grant or eminent domain restrictions to low and moderate-income homes at 57 Ballard Vale Street. This is the Avalon Oaks property. You'll recall that there are some affordable units within that complex, and for a number of years, since its inception, essentially, the monitoring of those affordable units has been done by Avalon. Their commitment expired on that, so now we're seeking authorization for the town to honor that commitment and to continue to monitor the purchase and sale of those units. Article 32, to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Section 3.5.1.1 and replace it with specific language. The intention here is to limit seating at sandwich shops to 12. Currently, you'll recall that in sandwich shops, there is no opportunity for seating. This was something that Valerie Gingrich, the planning director, had discussed with the board a few months ago, and this would allow for that type of seating. Article 33 is to amend the inhabitant bylaws of the town by amending Section 51, Comprehensive Stormwater Management Bylaw. The intention here is to ease the requirements for individuals, perhaps, who are seeking to subdivide a piece of property and to construct two single-family homes. Currently, the requirements in terms of dealing with the stormwater require a comprehensive stormwater permit, which requires a fair amount of additional engineering, if you will. They would be able to, under this provision, utilize the simple stormwater permit process, which meets the requirements of the planning and conservation and provides a measure of, makes it a little easier for folks that are looking to do that. Article 34 is to amend Section 6.2 of the zoning bylaws regarding the floodplain district. You'll recall that FEMA has been going through a process of reviewing the various floodplain areas, specifically, in our case, the Shawshene River Basin. There are some new maps that have been created, and this would place our bylaw in compliance with their new mapping. Article 35, to amend the zoning bylaws regarding establishment of the ability to have an outdoor patio and services as part of a general service restaurant designation. So currently, there is an allowance for indoor patios, which would be an enclosed area. This would create an opportunity to have an outdoor, open-air patio area accessible through the main entrance or an entrance to the restaurant. Article 36, to amend the zoning bylaws by amending Section 3.5.1.5 and 3.6.3 to provide auto and truck rental. Currently, these uses are provided as part of personal services or retail. It really is looking to reclassify these in a more appropriate category. Article 37, to amend the zoning bylaws to create a new neighborhood mixed-use zoning district along Lowell Street, from Dartmouth Street to Lowell Street. This provides for the ability to add multifamily housing via a special permit, and it also removes some incompatible auto uses in that zone. You'll recall, this was a discussion point with Valerie Gingrich when she met with the board a couple months ago. Article 38 is to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 3.9 and Section 3.5.2, to essentially bring our zoning bylaw regarding marijuana district into compliance with the requirements that the state has set out. You'll note that there was, in the current language, a reference to interim regulations for medical marijuana use. Those interim regulations have since become permanent, so this basically just seeks to put us in compliance with the current Article 39 is to amend the inhabitant bylaws for the purpose of making our animal control and dog bylaws compliant with state statutes that were changed in 2012. And then Article 40 is to amend the inhabitant bylaws, Chapter, I believe it's Chapter 4, Section 1, to clarify the definition of the appointing committee. This is the appointing committee for filling finance committee vacancies. You'll recall, there was some question about the reference to chairman of the last finance committee. This came up several months ago, and so there's language in here intended to clarify the definition of those individuals that have the authority to make that appointment. And that is all of the nonpetition articles.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I offer the opportunity to members of the board to offer any observations or questions at this time. I see none.
What of ample time?
Yeah, there's, as Mr. Smaglia just uttered, we will have more opportunities to delve into each of those, again, at the joint finance and planning board meeting. All of those will be discussed in fair detail. Mr. Hall will be there, as well as members from planning board, as well as people representing the various articles there. So thank you for the summary, and we'll look forward to digging in deep. I want to express also that the finance committee has been meeting all along and continues to discuss all of the budget articles that Mr. Hall just went over. And so, all of these budgetary items are being discussed, and the finance committee will be making some recommendations as to approve, disapprove, or otherwise at that same joint meeting. So unless there's anything else, Mr. Hall?
No, that should do it on those items.
If that's the case, then I will ask you then to move to communications.
Under communications is a memo from Paul Aluny, the town engineer. This is an update on Kinder Morgan. Just a review to some measure, and then going forward. So, November 20 of 2015, you'll recall that Tennessee Gas filed an application for their Northeast Direct Energy Project with FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. On December 7, FERC issued a notice of application acknowledging receipt of the application. The town then filed a notice to become an intervenor in that process. Approximately 1,800 interveners are involved in reviewing the application at this point. The DPU just recently issued notice that Tennessee Gas is seeking permission to access private properties to conduct civil survey work. This was a voluminous document that included private property in all of the various communities that they're passing through in Massachusetts, and specifically Massachusetts and New Hampshire, I think, was listed in our filing. But there are three properties that were specifically cited in Wilmington, one being the Evento property, a second, the Heffron property, and then property owned by a Charles and Mary Ann Humphrey. It's anticipated that the state and municipal properties, that we will be receiving a separate request or a separate filing by DPU to seek similar authorization. The Northeast Municipal Pipeline Coalition received a review of the Attorney General's Electric Reliability Study. It's titled "Power System Reliability in New England: Meeting Electric Resource Needs in the Era of Growing Dependence on Natural Gas." And this study basically concluded that there is not a need at this time for additional gas pipeline infrastructure through the year 2030, which is interesting, because obviously, Kinder Morgan is making the case that there is significant need for pipeline infrastructure. Franklin County Regional Council of Governments has filed a petition with FERC requesting that a formal hearing be conducted to essentially make some judgment as to whether the Attorney General's study is, in fact, accurate, or whether, in fact, there is a requirement for additional pipeline in this region. April of 2016, Tennessee Gas expected to issue an update on their resource reports. These are a series of reports that chronicle comments that have been, public comments that have been made during December of 15 and January of 16. There's also the Spectra Gas Access Northeast Project, which is going on concurrently. This is a separate project, but again, seeking to construct gas pipeline infrastructure. A request has been made to consolidate that filing with the Tennessee Gas filing and essentially address them in a more comprehensive way, as opposed to dealing with them separately. And then of note, there's a tentative date of March 28 for the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, of which Wilmington is a part of, to host a meeting with the congressional delegation. This is, again, the date is tentative, and we don't yet have a time, but the expectation is that the meeting would be held in Drakeett, so we'll provide more information as that becomes available.
Mr. Hall, may I ask you, and if you don't have the answer, I think maybe some folks that are, I think, saw Paul come in. With regards to the Spectra Gas, it's number four. Where Access Northeast Project, Spectra Gas is currently in pre-filing phase of FERC process, and the request was made that FERC look at the Tennessee Gas Pipe and Spectra Gas as a combined sort of project, or on its whole, those two things together. You know, all along, I was kind of hoping at some point that Spectra would rise more to the occasion, if you would. If FERC were to look at the Spectra project and say, this is the one that ultimately, it's less invasive into the communities, but still gives some increase of supply, perhaps they would go in that direction and sort of let us off the hook, if you will. So, I don't know. Do you know if it's an either/or in terms of how FERC, will they give one contract versus the other, or will they look potentially to split the contracts up and maybe give a portion to each?
I think Paul may be able to comment on that to some measure. My sense is that at least part of the rationale is that rather than dealing with these infrastructure projects piecemeal, let's look at this in a more global way and see if it makes sense to have both of these pipeline projects going forward, or whether we're essentially creating excess capacity. But perhaps, Mr. Aluny can comment on that.
Thank you, Paul. My understanding is that they would look at them as, there's two separate filings, and they're dependent on the contracts that they receive. But this request was made by the New Hampshire Municipal Coalition, and I think it was co-authored by the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, to look at, to perhaps consider the Spectra proposal and see if the, and make sure that there wouldn't be now an overcapacity of gas pipeline infrastructure in the area.
Overcapacity if both were approved, or?
Correct.
Okay, because to me, I always had it in my head that they were competitive proposals, but that's not necessarily the case?
Competitive only in contracts, I would think. But if they both receive their contracts to fulfill the, to meet the need of the infrastructure that they're designing, then I don't believe that there's any reason for FERC to approve. Like, it's not first come, first served, I guess.
Okay. And that's helpful. One other thing, since you're there, thanks for stepping up, by the way. I appreciate you coming in this evening. Somewhere, it was mentioned that Franklin Regional County Government filed a petition with FERC requesting formal hearing, and that it was possible that the Northeast Municipal Pipeline Coalition, of which we are a member, was potentially going to file that same petition, maybe even as recent as today. Do you know if that did happen, or is it going to?
They actually voted to not file that petition, and the reasoning is, is that the coalition decided at the very beginning to not file as an intervenor in the proceedings and leave that to each community. That's a part of the coalition. So, the coalition actually couldn't file this petition and left it to the individual communities. We expressed the concern to FERC to ensure that there is, in fact, a demand and to look at that study and the platform that was available to the town, which was just there to make comment throughout their scoping session.
Thank you, Paul. You know, you're there, so I apologize. I want to make sure that any questions that the board might have, that while we have Paul, we should use the resource. Any questions or concerns?
Awesome.
Thank you, Paul, for being here. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hall?
Next is a letter of support from Representative James Missully. This is with regard to a grant that the town is seeking for $250,000. It's from the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is a pass-through grant through the state. It would be funding for the Yentile Farm Recreation Facility. So, if you recall, there was a similar grant that was filed about a year ago or thereabouts for $400,000. Unfortunately, we're not able to obtain that grant because of our, some of our demographics, but hopefully, we will be able to succeed on this one. Next is the memo to the board of selectmen regarding the DPU notice. Essentially, I went through that previously, but this is the notice, again, that informs us about the desire of Tennessee Gas to us about the desire of Tennessee Gas to access private property for survey work related to their pipeline.
And in your memo, you mentioned that someone from the town will be attending the April 13th session in Drakett. Was it, was, was Drakett perceived? Why Drakett and not Andover is really my only question.
Well, actually, it may be Andover. It could, you know, it certainly is closer. I think, I suspect Paul, given that he's the go-to guy on this, will be, I know we've talked, and I think he, he at least will be attending one or the other, so we'll certainly have it covered, whether it's Andover or Drakett.
Great, thank you.
Next is correspondence from the July 4th Committee. This is the press release that they issued, and it reads as follows, the following, "Following the denial of the application to include a carnival as part of the annual Fun on the Fourth Celebration, the members of the Fourth of July Committee met to discuss options for the 2016 and beyond. For the past three years, we have been challenged to present a celebration that differed in many respects from the past celebrations. These challenges have greatly impacted the financial resources we have available, as our events are underwritten by donations and contributions from the carnival. With that said, in the weeks to come, we will be working with the participating community groups and town officials in hopes of presenting a celebration on Friday, July 1st, and Saturday, July 2nd, with fireworks on Saturday evening. As we have in the past, we will rely on the generosity of donors and sponsors to present the celebration to the community. Prior to this decision, our discussions included the possibility of appealing the denial to the court system. As much as we disagree with the denial and believe that the basis of the denial is unsupportable, none of us joined the committee to dedicate our time to litigation. As a committee, therefore, we have concluded that our focus is better dedicated to remaining where it has been for many, more than three decades, to present a fun, family, community event for the residents of Wilmington. At the same time, in light of the events of the past three years, we believe that it is time for the approval process to be reevaluated, and for the reevaluation to be placed in the hands of the residents at town meeting. With the application process behind us, we look forward to focusing our efforts on continuing this Wilmington tradition for its 36th year, the Fourth of July Committee."
Thank you.
Next, under correspondence, is a series of emails that were sent to the board that came from residents in light of the decision of the Board of, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Specifically, there are eight emails here, and basically characterize them in, in some manner, they're expressing disappointment, some measure of frustration about the decision. Talked about the value of the carnival as part of the July 4th celebration, imposed some questions about the process, and expressed a desire to bring back the carnival.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. For a moment, if I could, on this bullet, I'd like to maybe take a personal privilege and, well, first and foremost, I wanted to express great appreciation for the, the folks that wrote these letters. And they're public record. I'm not going to go through the exercise of calling out or singling out names, but each of the letters that I, that we had opportunity to read offered different nuances, but in general, I found them to be well-thought-out, articulate, and professional. Each individual was disappointed with the ruling at the Zoning Board of Appeals, and was, and made it clear that they had challenges with either that process, or the vote itself, or other processes. And, and I want to ensure, or make sure that the residents of the town and these individuals know that we, as members of the board, received all of those communications, and we have them in front of us, and, and gave them great attention. Now, that said, unfortunately, and, and again, I, I give compliments to those who wrote these letters. Unfortunately, and I don't want to turn a positive into a negative, but I became incredibly frustrated, and frankly angry, at a very small but very loud number of residents in, in our town who chose to use social media and other media outlets to, to not just voice their opposition, or their, or their challenge, or their, their difference of opinion with how the Board of Appeals voted, but rather to take it to another degree and really become unneighborly. I've made it very clear in previous meetings, publicly and in written, in written form, that I don't agree with the member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Dan Veerman. I don't agree with his vote, and everyone in town, hopefully, that's watching this process knows that. Now, that being said, nobody, nobody who volunteers their time in service to our community, who has done so admirably for seven-plus years, who serves and protects the interests of the people of this community, nobody deserves the level of treatment and, and the shameful discourse that has been put on the internet. And I, I won't single out names, because I'm above that, but we, as a town, are above the level of, the kind of treatment that Mr. Veerman has gotten. It's a democratic process, and the results of that democratic process didn't get us what we wanted. When I say "we," I, I join in with those who wanted the carnival. But it was ipso facto a democratic process, and no individual who participates in that process deserves the level of, of shameful communications that have been put on the internet. So, any of, anyone that, that has been a participant in that, I would encourage, before you lob out stones or criticisms of Mr. Veerman or any other public servant, that you ought to look in the mirror and, and consider whether or not you're, you're above or better than the person who conveyed that vote. So, that's my opinion on that. I don't know if anybody else wants to share anything, but I certainly invite you to do so. Mr. Nuth, please.
I echo, she, please do.
As I did at the initial vote in December, and as many of yous know, I am also on the Fourth of July Committee, and just to let everybody know, when you abstain from a vote or remove yourself from a vote, you're not, we don't talk about and partake in the conversation. So, that's why I'm just going to let everyone know again, I'm going to have to abstain from this, being on the Fourth of July Committee, and that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nuth?
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, express my agreement for many of the sentiments that, that you just expressed. In addition to that, I wanted to respond directly to some of the folks who've asked the question, you know, how, how did we get to this point? And how, you know, why did the Board of, Board of Selectmen take specific action that we've taken now on a couple of different occasions? And I think it's important, especially in light of the, the points that you just made, to explain to folks how we got to this point. And, and many of the folks in the room will be familiar with this, because they've been active participants in the application process. But for those folks who haven't actively participated in that, and for folks who might watch at home, or look at the, you know, the news media, or print media, social media, whatever the case might be, I think it's important to point out a couple of things. And first of all, going back to 2013, that was the first time that the Board of Appeals entertained an application for a carnival at the site, which is the subject of this most recent application, i.e. the Swain School Site. In fact, Mr. Veerman had participated as a member of the Board of Direct, Board of Appeals for several years. I'm not sure how many. I know he was appointed in 2006. I know that he became a full-time member in 2008, when the town saw fit to reorganize and restructure the Board of Appeals, and to make it a five-person board. So, I, I know that at least going back to 2006, he's participated in the process that has resulted in a special permit being issued for a carnival, albeit at the old high school campus, the high school site. I think it's also, and that granted is, I don't know, couple, few hundred feet further away from his home than the Swain School Site, but certainly in his neighborhood, clearly. Then in 2013, with the construction of the new high school, and the prospect of having to move that carnival location, Mr. Veerman actually proactively went to the town and indicated that he was going to decline to participate in that case. He acknowledged that he had some concerns about the site. He acknowledged that he lived in the neighborhood, and based on that, he was going to just proactively not participate. At the time, however, we also had another Board of Appeals member, who was a member of the Fourth of July Committee. He too had a question as to whether or not he could participate, because he was actually a member of the entity that was applying for the special permit. So, I think when folks wonder how we got to this point, you have to go back to 2013, and first of all, understand that Mr. Veerman proactively had offered not to participate, but that the response to him was, "We need you to participate. Without you, and without Mr. Barletta, we now have a three-person board, and that three-person board cannot issue a special permit." So, he put himself out there. Both he and Mr. Barletta both put themselves out there. Counsel advised them that, living in the general vicinity of the application, one could question whether or not he had an interest in it. Similarly, counsel advised Mr. Barletta, being a member of this nonprofit, one might question whether or not you have an interest, and whether or not you have a conflict. The law is very clear, and as counsel advised these two gentlemen, both of whom put their reputations out there in an effort to fulfill their obligations as members of the Board of Appeals, and on the advice of counsel, they asked their appointing authorities, namely the Board of Selectmen, to determine whether or not they had a financial interest. This Board of Selectmen looked at Mr. Veerman's participation previously, looked at the fact that a week-long event really didn't have any financial implications for him as a neighbor, and we looked at Mr. Barletta and said, "He's a, he's a member of a nonprofit. He's, he's got no financial interest either." So, the question that folks have asked about quote-unquote "special permission" is really a finding by the Board of Selectmen that they didn't have a financial interest, and that's it. And the law is very clear that without a financial interest, they are fully competent to hear that case. Now, what's also ironic, I, and it's, and it's, you know, it's disappointing, it's frustrating, especially for folks who, you know, the result of the Board of Appeals process isn't what they had hoped for. But when you fast-forward to 2016, and, and by the way, Mr. Veerman, I should note, back in 2013, there was a full complement of that five-member Board of Appeals. They needed a four-to-one vote, four in the affirmative and one opposed. They needed a four-to-one vote in order to issue the special permit. Had Mr. Veerman been the only person to vote against that special permit in 2013, at that same site, the special permit would have been issued. It would have been a four-to-one vote. But there was another member of the Board of Appeals who had apparently similar concerns that Mr. Veerman had relative to that site. So, that was a three-to-two vote. And based on that three-to-two vote, the special permit wasn't issued. You fast-forward now to 2016, it's the same site. I think the Fourth of July Committee, as I understand it, as the applicant, tried to make some changes to the site that would still be, you know, the kind of event that the operator could, could, you know, generate enough cash flow to be able to continue the, you know, the contributions that it's made in the past to the Fourth of July Committee. And, you know, but nonetheless, it was the same site. Now, you have another Board of Appeals member, who apparently, his company has a business relationship with the operator of the carnival under the, under the application. The carnival outfit that was slated to do, to provide the services and the machines had a financial relationship with this guy's company. Now, I'm not friends with Ed Loud, who's, who's that particular member. I don't socialize with him. I don't consider myself personal friends, but I certainly know him. And I believe that he too, if he were given the opportunity under the law to come to the Board of Selectmen as his appointing authority, I believe he would have done that. I believe he, just as Mr. Barletta and Mr. Veerman had done, I believe he would have come to this board and asked us, "If you find, if you can tell me I don't have a financial interest, I will participate." I, I have no reason to believe Mr. Loud wouldn't do the same thing. I suspect that his, his relationship with a company who was doing business with the operator is just not something that, under the state conflicts statute, would, could come to the Board of Selectmen. It's just not something that we could have an effect on the outcome. And so, as it turns out, now that Mr. Loud is, is apparently has been ineligible, you have the same, other than Mr. Loud, you have the same four people out of the five who had participated three years ago. How in the world would we expect that, you know, perhaps one, maybe two, how could we expect them, or demand from them, that they make a different decision than they had made three years ago? Now, the, the fact of the matter is, maybe the, you know, maybe the application was sufficiently different, so that one of those members was comfortable changing his vote. But I think it's terribly unfair to, you know, to make some of the comments that Mr. Shampoo was describing, and I'm, I'm looking at the audience, because you folks are here, and I know you care about this. I'm not suggesting for a minute that any of you made those kinds of comments, but the reality is, we've got somebody who serves this town for hundreds of hours over the course of the last 10 years, who specifically said, "That's okay, I'll stay out of this one," who then put his reputation on the line when the town said, "No, no, we need you, and here's how you can, here's the process that you can follow in order to be eligible to hear this case." And he did that. And, and now, you know, three years later, circumstances apparently hadn't changed enough for him to change the vote that he believed in. So, you know, I just, I think that all the things that Mr. Shampoo said are absolutely true, and, believe me, I understand how passionately certain people feel about, you know, about having that specific activity and having that carnival. But I also think people need to, you know, make their observations with the benefit of, you know, all the information, and, and all the information is that the guy tried to stay out of it three years ago, and the town said, "We need you to participate." So, folks need to remember that when they're critical of a decision that he made. And again, you know, when folks question someone's integrity, and question whether or not they were influenced to make a specific decision because a particular site is 200 or 300 feet from his front door, I'm not sure that carries a lot of weight, when the ones that he voted in support of are 400 or 500 feet from his door, you know? I just don't, I don't see the difference. I don't see the red flags there. So, I, I, I agree with what Mr. Shampoo has said. There were, you know, a lot of comments in these emails that we just can't, as volunteers who, you know, work every day and who have families, we couldn't possibly respond to all of these in a, you know, a thoughtful and thorough manner. But I think that this forum gives us the opportunity to do that, and I didn't want to pass up that opportunity. to pass up that opportunity. So, thank you for indulging me, Mr. Chairman.
No, indeed, thank you. I appreciate your summary of the sequence of events. I think that's helpful for everyone to visualize. I want to give the same opportunity to my colleagues on the left here. If you have observations or some thoughts to share.
I'll go first. I had intentions of making a comment under New Business and Committee Reports. I'll wait until that time. Obviously, we're going to have public comments, so residents are going to have an opportunity to chime in. But I do reserve my opportunity at that particular time, right after public comments, under New Business Committee Reports, where I'm going to plan on talking about it.
Very well, of course. Anything at this time?
I think, you know, the chronology of events has been stated. It's obviously a very passionate topic. I've certainly taken the votes that the members of the board have taken, and I stand by the votes that I've taken. The law is very clear. You know, I've seen a lot of positive comments in here about togetherness and patriotism and friendship and community, and, you know, I certainly have enjoyed the carnival, and I've been down there, and I've been part of the nonprofits and have reaped the benefits of the fundraising opportunity, and it's a great historical legacy of family events for every annual Fourth of July. You know, I want to be supportive of things, but I also think it's important to be realistic about some of the negative things that have been out there as well. And I think that Mr. Newhouse's comments about the history and how the town has asked this gentleman to participate, you know, he did. And, you know, now taking the same vote here in 2016 is a reiteration of what happened in 2013. It's a process. It's the law. It was followed, whether people have opinions for or against it. You know, I feel that things were done according to the proper procedure that we had to work with. And, you know, I take exception to what my personal feelings or opinions about, you know, "This doesn't mean enough to you." You know, "Fine for you to get over it," or, you know, "You should be ashamed of your votes." I'm really not, you know, the least bit phased by that because people haven't taken the time to personally get to know me or ask my opinions on things, and, you know, I take exception to people just making general statements without having the knowledge to back that up. But, you know, being in these publicly elected seats, you have to have thick skin, and people are going to take shots at you over the bow. But they have no idea the amount of time and the hours that goes into this and what we do on a day-to-day basis. But, you know, that's for people to make their own decisions. But, you know, I do want to say that, you know, the person that's received a lot of criticism, you know, I'm favorable for the carnival, but, you know, this is a father that has two children that, you know, have to read this and they have to attend public schools, and, you know, I take real issue with what they have had to endure as members of a family. And, you know, that will stick, as much as all the positive things about this, that negative piece will stick with me. And, you know, I've always been, I've been a lifelong resident of this town and really proud to be from here, but reading some of these things and people that I know, I wasn't proud. And I take that personal.
Thank you for sharing. I acknowledge and I respect those observations as well. Okay, so I guess we'll move on to the next bullet, which is, I guess, a pseudo-related. I asked Mr. Hall to put this next discussion item on the agenda this evening, and it is effectively a discussion. I don't have a tremendously strong opinion on the subject, but I've been trying to wrestle with it in my head, and the subject is this notion of associate members for the zoning Board of Appeals. And Mr. Hall did some research, you know, based on my request, chatted with town council and looked into the history of the issue, and I'll let him characterize some of that. But my thinking early on was simply that, up until 2008, I believe it was, the zoning Board of Appeals was a three-member board with three associate members. Am I using the right terminology, associate members?
Yes.
So in 2008, because it was deemed that a three-member board always, virtually always, had to act unanimously, that was too tall of an order by and large. And so it was deemed appropriate by the town meeting at that time to change the structure of the zoning Board of Appeals from a three-member board with alternates or with associate members to a five-member board and remove the alternates. And so now, you know, that seems to have worked by and large. I think there's probably been a very few number of occasions where members have had to recuse themselves because of conflict or couldn't attend or whatever the nature of the circumstances were, and that five-member board became four or potentially three. And the Board of Selectmen has had to exercise this, what is it, the right of necessity or rule of necessity to enable one of the recused members to participate. So my thinking was, geez, you know, we had a situation where perhaps it could have been perceived that, if there was any insinuation or perception that members might have been biased by virtue of proximity or any other circumstances, and I guess I'm speaking specifically to this most recent vote, but in any circumstance, if members are perceived to be biased or in conflict, then we could remove any innuendo or any suggestion that possibly they are, have them sit out on that particular issue, and have associates who have zero conflict sit in just for that issue and hear and vote. So you ideally always have a full five-member board deliberating on and casting votes. That seems appealing to me, but I recognize there may be some negatives associated with that. And I wanted to have the conversation with you folks because if we proceed forward, we would need to get on this town warrant. You know, I don't want to force it. I don't want to rush it, but I want to have the conversation. So I hope you'll appease me in that regard. And so there's my, Jeff, if you want to characterize it more or read your memo, I would welcome that.
So just to summarize, in terms of the recent history, Wilmington has had a three-person Board of Appeals since at least 1920. And then at the May 3, 2008, annual town meeting, there was a vote, and more recently, and I don't know specifically how many years ago the associate members were added, but there were three associate members that also served on the Board of Appeals. May 3 of 2008, there was a town meeting vote that was overwhelmingly in favor of changing the structure from a three-person Board of Appeals to a five-person Vote of Appeals. I believe the vote was something in the order of 151 to 2. And as part of that decision, the decision was also to remove the three associate members from the board. And my understanding is that part of the rationale was that with a five-member board, it was expected that there would not be a need to have associate members. Some of the issues that I've been told about that created a bit of a challenge with associate members is that they would be expected, at least in some measure, to attend these Board of Appeals meetings because obviously they need to stay up on the cases that are before the Board of Appeals. They need to understand how the Board of Appeals operates so when they're called upon, they can respond in an appropriate manner. Typically, it was the exception to the rule for members of the associate group to be called upon to hear a case. So the consequence of that was that there were instances where volunteer individuals on the associate group would not always attend the Board of Appeals meetings, or they would resign just because they were there, but they weren't able to participate in many of the meetings. So that was a challenge in terms of keeping a group of associate members. Another consequence that was brought to my attention was that in certain instances, when a case comes before the Board of Appeals, the individuals who, individuals cannot miss the first meeting and then attend the next several meetings and make a vote. If they're not able to attend the full hearing, and it could be continued for two or three or four meetings, then that individual is not able to vote. So there were instances in which a regular member of the Board of Appeals was not able to attend a particular meeting because of business commitments or family commitments, and an associate member would step forward to fill in for that person. So that individual now must continue to attend the subsequent meetings. In the meantime, the regular member returns in subsequent meetings, and they're now having to spend some period of time at the meeting, listening to the first case, which they can't participate in because they have business subsequent to that case to deal with on the board. So these were some of the issues that were raised as to the challenges of maintaining an associate group on the Board of Appeals. The general sense seemed to be that going from three to five would lessen the chances or the likelihood that there would be a reliance or need to rely on associate members. So based upon that, the decision was made to recommend this at town meeting, and as I indicated, it was overwhelmingly approved. You know, I think throughout this whole process, when, you know, before decisions are made about changing the process for the Board of Appeals in this type of circumstance, there needs to be a step back in looking at the bigger picture. This is clearly one particular circumstance, and there's no question, people are passionate about the carnival, and I've been to a number of the carnivals. I was there in the aftermath of 2013, and I saw what the consequences of not having a carnival there. It was a much different environment than it is when the carnival was there. But I think before decisions are made about changing the structure, there needs to be consideration as to how does this affect the bigger picture, not only, you know, an event like this, but other cases that may come before the board. So I guess that's my only caution about making a change in this kind of heated moment.
I appreciate that. Valid observations. So I want to have a conversation. I'm hoping that you folks have had an opportunity to maybe digest this, admittedly in a short period of time, but anyone, I'm not going to start with anyone unless, you know, just sort of raise a hand.
Yeah, I'd be happy to weigh in. I mean, I can speak to, from memory, I can speak to Mr. Hall's account of the history in 2008 and why the changes were made to the board, and I would concur with all of the reasons that Mr. Hall laid out. I would probably boil it down also to one, you know, one simple fact that I think applies in this case as well, that has got people kind of revisiting whether or not this makes sense, and that's that, in essence, it was intended to dilute one voice of opposition, you know? That's in essence what happened. And so with a three-person board for every special permit and variance, there are other things that the Board of Appeals does with a vote, with the requisite vote is a little bit different, but for variances in special permits, it had to be unanimous, it had to be three to zero. So one person who objected to it kind of had a lot of ability to, you know, to effectuate the outcome, and what many people thought is a disproportionate ability to effectuate the outcome. In the five-person board that we have now addresses that to some extent. Now, in this case, because you had one individual that just couldn't hear the case this go around, now you had, you know, a four-person board, and it's still, under the statute, you still need four votes to make it happen. But, you know, I strongly suspect that if we weren't in a situation where it was a, you know, a nonprofit and very much a town event, you know, as evidenced by the amount of people who pay attention to this, right? This is a community event. The applicant is a nonprofit, you know, and you just have a guy whose company does business with the carnival operator and another guy that happens to live nearby. Those facts just don't play out very often. And so the reality is that, you know, the five-person board creates this outcome a lot less often than the three-person board would. And then when you have associate members, then you have, you know, on top of the, you know, the very practical scenarios that I think the manager just went through, well, you know, what if you had somebody as an associate member right now? You know, one point of view might be, well, that would have been good to have five people sitting there. But, you know, you don't want people posturing as to who hears a case either. You want people to either be qualified to hear it, under the law, or not qualified to hear it. You don't want that gamesmanship being played of who's hearing a case based on a predetermined position, you know? So I think to the manager's point, you know, you've got to be careful about making wholesale changes to the process just based on one result. And I also, you know, very candidly, I believe that even given this situation, there are other options that are available. I don't think you need to change the process to get what you want. I think it's possible to get a carnival there. And I, you know, so I think you've got to be careful about throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
I want to be clear. I guess I wasn't suggesting that we revert back to three and alternates, but I was rather suggesting we maintain, that it might make sense to maintain the five and add perhaps just one alternate, just for that unique, very unusual, admittedly, that unique and unusual circumstance when one individual finds him or herself conflicted. And so it's appealing to me to this notion of having a full five-member board to hear and render a vote when a four-vote requirement is afoot. So because it does give the ability for one of the members to be a dissenting voice and potentially win over, if you will, other members so that that one individual doesn't have to be sort of the only one to carry the day, as it were. So I wasn't, and I'm not sure necessarily you were thinking that I was suggesting we go back to three and alternates, but five and a single alternate, I don't know. It makes sense, although I agree, and I also lob this out, not as a means of solving the problem that's immediately upon us with regards to the carnival for 2016, because it doesn't solve that problem. It would potentially be a solution to future circumstances where this presents itself. Now, Mr. Hall made the observation here that it's incredibly, and I'll use his words, "The number of times during which only four members have been able to hear a case in recent history has been infrequent." We don't have a specific number, but I take that on its face to mean that there haven't been a lot of opportunities except for one that's been unfortunately very prominent and very visible to all of us. So this, if my idea were to move forward, it wouldn't solve anything for 2016, but potentially would resolve the issue that put us where we are today, potentially going forward. I really value your opinion on this, Mike, and your view on it, both from a pragmatic sense, but also your historical sort of institutional knowledge on it as well. So thank you for sharing that. Anyone else up here want to voice?
I'm open and receptive to it. I mean, you know, this is changing a complexion of a boy that hears a ton of other cases beyond just a carnival. So I think Jeff's points are well made, that, you know, to restructure all of this over the result of one vote. I mean, I think you've got to get to the origin, which is, you know, if you're really going to analyze these things, I think you've got to look at, you know, the town bylaws too, which says who you need to go before to get a carnival approved. I mean, I don't think you should necessarily change the whole complexion of a Board of Appeals in service of one particular special interest activity. I think you have to look at some of the root cause of how, you know, the overarching process and the overall reason why the case is even being heard, you know? So I mean, I think if you're going to look at it, you've got to look at everything. And furthermore, you know, who decides whether or not you've got to call in from the bullpen on something or not? Is it the Board of Selectmen that decides that? Is it, you know, do you just boat a man or woman off the island because you think they might have a dissenting vote? might have a dissenting vote? You know, how does, how does that work? So, you know, I'm concerned about that and how our own community is going to feel, or applicants are going to feel about, I got to vote on this given day based on this complexion of the Board of Appeals versus if I picked it on another day. And then how do you manage that? Where does it start? Where does it end? And are we just perpetuating more of the public perception of confusion and that things are not being done right? Which, you know, I don't think that anything was done wrong. I mean, we have state, Massachusetts state laws that currently oversee this now, and we follow those laws to the letter. And because we didn't get the desired outcome, now we're, you know, we should start doing major town business differently? Think about some of the cases that would have potentially not gone the way they should have, that don't even pertain to this activity. I'm not willing to, as a sitting member of this board, as an elected member of this board, to forfeit all of the other positive things that are going right because of this complexion of this Board of Appeals. And I think, you know, if we start not to be taken out of context, start making major changes because of special interests, then I will go on the record saying that we're in trouble. We're in trouble.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Just in furtherance of Ms. O'Connell's last point, you know, you have a Board of Appeals whose job it is to consider certain things and ultimately to cast a vote based on the information they have, their own judgment on how to apply that information. And, you know, more often than not, and, and this is a very unique scenario, nearly all the other times, you have financial interests at stake. Oftentimes, those financial interests are sophisticated businesses. I'm not sure you want to expose the town, in the greatest sense, to that potential problem every time you have somebody who either does or does not participate as a regular member. Do you understand what I'm saying? So if, if you have a, let's take a situation where there's a, where there's a, a business interest who is going to be, you know, wants to locate an industrial use on a street that people, you know, aren't crazy about, and you have somebody who lives, you know, in, some might say, too close to it to be objective. Yet that person could be fully within their rights as a member of the board to hear that case. Do we want to have to defend cases like that in litigation, you know, against business interests who just don't like the fact that a particular person either recused himself or stayed on? I mean, I guess to, to Judy's point about, you know, who makes those decisions, those, those, the guidelines and the parameters of those decisions are already codified in law. And so, you know, members make those decisions all the time for themselves with the advice of counsel. You start, you know, making it a, you know, a convenience for folks to step away and have other folks fill in, you're going to be defending appeals based on that decision all the time, you know? And, you know, and that's the kind of stuff that, that the Board of Appeals, you know, consistently entertains and, you know, and makes hard decisions about, and they have to defend that. And, you know, we've, we've all seen those things that can end up in a, you know, in litigation that takes a lot of time, resources, and money. So, so I just, I throw that into the mix when you try and balance, you know, the relative infrequency with, you know, the, the, the need that it fills on occasion. I think you've got to consider those prospective business interests and those kinds of requests to the Board of Appeals that they entertain all the time.
Thank you. Mr. McCray, I'm sorry.
Like I said, I get something to say under new business when the time comes, I'd like to say something at that time. But, no, I understand. I agree with my colleagues. I mean, I served on a board for a few years. Years ago, we had three members of the Board of Appeals. You needed a unanimous decision to get anything done. Then they changed the concept. Now you're going to need four members at least to get an approval of a special permit if one person decides not to go, decides to vote against it, so it's still passed. But obviously, if the faces are still the same, obviously, we're going to be dealing with this dilemma come next year, because what dramatically changes are going to be come next year if the same members are voting on it and one states that he has a financial lis- interest and, and the votes, I don't see it changing. I don't. We're going to have to become creative somehow and to make a change somehow and to do this, because it's not going to come next year, the carnival's not going to be here again next year. If we have the same makeup of the same board and the result is going to be the same, we got to become creative somehow. And that's what it really, really comes down in a nutshell, and it's just common sense. That's it.
Thank you.
Just, just a kind of a simple point on that, changing the makeup of that board. As the town manager stated, that it was, you know, overwhelming decision by the town that wanted that board to be a five-member voting board. And now it is. So we have five members that make every meeting and make the decisions that that very important board hears. Now we're asking maybe to put another member on as an alternate, and just to make it a simple here is, we have enough ti- hard enough time to filling, fill a lot of these boards. So we're going to ask another board to look for somebody else that's going to come and perhaps maybe have to go to every meeting or almost every meeting and not be able to vote on many issues, if at all, if at any, over the course of a year. That was kind of the problem why we went to the five-man board originally, which was overwhelmingly voted in by the town. So just a little different spin on changing the makeup of that board.
But, Mr. Chairman, I'll say, I was one of those members that voted to increase it to a five-member board, because it's very difficult to get something passed. If one person votes against it, and there's only three voting members, and it's dead. You know, so it gave somebody an opportunity to at least plead their case. So if one person did vote against it, at least they'd have that opportunity with the other four remaining members to vote in favor, and a special permit would be granted, you know? So obviously, this is a little bit different.
Indeed. You know, I'll admit that we're having the conversation now because it just came to light, and it's very visible. I would much prefer to start this conversation about this, if it's worthwhile to even have the conversation, in September, October, and when there's ample time to wrestle with and dig into some of these, these nuances about what are the ramifications of it, and, and are we manipulating or, or changing the structure of our, of our local government? You know, so I, I don't want to be guilty of trying to shoehorn this into the existing or the impending town meeting and, and, you know, make a mistake just out of, out of haste. So I, I feel very confident that the conversation is worth having, but I'm also probably acquiring a higher level of confidence that it's worth continuing the conversation perhaps and not, not acting on it at this time, given that there's such a large number of questions that, that surround it. So, I mean, unless there was someone that wanted to make a motion or, or act on it, I would welcome that for sure, but...
No, I mean, I just want to be clear. I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that you brought this forward, and just for the record, I mean, because a selectman follows a process or thinks that something is for the overall benefit of the town, in no way, shape, or form implies that we're not supportive of the Fourth of July, the activities that have taken place for the past 35 years. But as a result of that, you know, I can't, I mean, I'm disappointed as, as much as the next person, but I'm not going to let the emotional component of this whole series of events cloud my judgment to think about what's for the overall better interest of the town. And I just don't see that relative to this. And so, you know, I'm going to stand firm on that and, and let that be my guide, you know, and let the chips fall where they may. But I just want to be clear that this is not, nothing to do with the carnival. This is to do what I think is best for the town. Just want to be clear on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarity, and frankly, I think I share very much with you. So unless there's anything else further on this subject, we'll, we'll turn it over and perhaps it'll come up again at a future date, but for the time being, we'll call it, we'll say it's asleep.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the rest of the board has any objection to it, but it strikes me that people here are interested in that. There's no objection to taking public comments out of order if, if folks have comment.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
I certainly don't, I have no objection to that as well. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we will indeed jump out of order. We'll, we'll talk specifically. I'm going to open it up to questions from the audience, but please understand that this is not public comment yet, I think, but we'll still have another opportunity to, to have some conversation and hear from you. But I, if people have observations or questions specifically about adding associate members to the zoning board of appeals, that's all we're going to be taking questions on. And I would just simply ask with, with respect to you all, just to try to resist the temptation to sort of give speeches, you know? We're going to try to keep these, you know, maybe three-minute commentaries, and then we'll move on. It's a Q and A, it's not an opportunity to, to, to grandstand. And, you know, just keep it polite, and I know I shouldn't have to say that, but that being said, when, when I call on you, just stand up and state your name and your, your residence for the record, and we'll, we'll just engage you that way. I hope that's, that's fair to everyone. So I saw a few hands already. I'm sorry. Mr. West?
Good evening. Frank West to Richmond Road. Several weeks ago, I was probably one of the ones that brought this forward to the board. And I was very clear at that time, and I'll be very clear tonight, in that I'm not referencing any particular vote. All I'm suggesting is, is that if you add an alternative to, to the Board of Appeals, it might make, A, it might make it a little bit easier for the existing members, because they're meeting, I believe, twice a month. And some of them might want to say, you know what? I, I really can't be there the next meeting because of a family commitment, but I have to be there because I have to take this vote and these particular votes. So, correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. McCray, you might actually know better than me, is that when they had alternates on the board, because I think you were on the Board of Appeals when they had alternates?
I never served on the Board of Appeals. I served on a board of...
Oh, sorry. Playing board. I'm sorry. My apologies. But I believe that...
I was on a playing board.
My apologies, Mike. But I believe that at that time, it was very difficult, as it is now, for people to, you know, want to leave, you know, not attend that particular, a particular meeting. So all I'm suggesting is, is that offer an article to town meeting, not for any one particular vote or one particular instance, but it would make it a lot easier for all, all cases to have a full complement of the board. I mean, is it fair? Because a- as we heard tonight, and I'll say respectfully to Mr. Semaglia, he stepped down when you talked about Fourth of July activities because of what? He has a conflict of interest. So technically, we were serving, we were being served by a four-member board for a shot time. And I agree wholeheartedly that Mr. Semaglia should have said, you know, hey, I'm a member of the committee and I can't serve. So if, having alternates might actually benefit the town. One last thing I'll say on that is that because you may end up with situations where somebody that wants to be a member of the Board of Appeals feel, may feel, well, gee, I can't be a member because I serve on one, two, or three other committees or nonprofits or whatever in the town, but if they allow alternates, you know what? I'm comfortable walking away from that particular case. So that's, that's my main comment. So I, I'd say respectfully to, to that action, let it, let it go before the town to decide whether we want to do at least one alternate. Let the town vote on that, rather than, you know, give us, give us a shot and make the same arguments at town meeting, plus or minus, whatever, whatever your, your feelings are. But certainly, this is for every vote, not one particular case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. West. Sir, thank you.
Hi. Dan Medor, Nine Lawrence Street. You've been stating that the reason why you moved from a three-person board to a five-person board was so that you wouldn't have a case where one person would, in effect, hold the decision in their hands. And so you made a decision to move to, to five with no alternates. And now you're talking about adding alternates, and you're bringing up those same alternate concerns. I would suggest an alternative, is that what you really want to do here is avoid unanimity, unanimity. And so we never are in a situation where one person can influence that vote. So if one person reposes them, reposes himself from the conversation, it now becomes required that you must still have, you would still allow one dissenting, dissenting vote, but three in favor. If two people reprove themselves, there would be two votes in favor, one dissenting vote, dissenting vote. So you could always have one dissenting vote without having to require unanimity for any decision. Hopefully, that makes sense, and is a way, that way forward, that we not require the handling of alternates, be able to just say, every vote will allow one dissenting vote.
I think I... I understood what you were saying, and I'm, I'm going to defer perhaps to Jeff, or, I don't know, maybe Mike, you have some...
Can someone just maybe say that in a different way?
You were looking for...
I, I think I can say that in a different way.
Majority vote.
It should, it should always be a majority, where you could always have one person vote no, and it could still pass. So you would never be held hostage, I would say. Not, and that's harsh, I know, but I'm just trying to make it clear. That no decision would be held hostage by one person. And it doesn't matter if you know they're going into it opposed, or if you, you don't know. But then you make, and I, I believe, I respect your decision to allow them to participate in the discussion, Mr. Biermann. I watched you make that decision, and I believe that you made that decision thinking you was, you know, going to at least hear the case impartially, and, and I respect your decision on that. The problem is the process, and that we end up with this rare situation. It is a rare situation, but it could happen again. Do we want to wrangle alternates every single time and keep them in the back burner just in the off chance that this happens once every five years? I think that's a little bit excessive. But if you were to change it so that the expected result of the vote was always that you would allow one person to vote no, and it could still pass, then, then you wouldn't have to deal with the alternates at all, and it would just always be a majority. And if it came down, and then you'd make a rule and say, there's only two people voting, obviously, then you can, could not proceed.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Mr.?
Medor.
Thank you, Mr. Medor. I think, and I don't want to, I'll let Jeff compliment or fill in the gaps in what I, how I answer here, but regrettably, that's out of our hands. And the reason that's, it's a, it's state statute, it's mass general law that dictates the number of votes that must be rendered in a special permit. Is that reasonable? Am I, is that a summary?
Yes, that's correct, that in the statute, chapter, I believe it's 41A, establishes the requirements for the Board of Appeals vote. If it's a three-person board, it has to be unanimous. If it's a five-person board, it has to be a four, at least four in favor. If it's a board greater than five, then it has to be a two-thirds requirement.
Pardon me. What was the four? What was it? If it was four people? You said it was three, it needs to be unanimous. If it was five, it would allow four in one. What's the rule for four?
It doesn't speak to four that I, I don't think it speaks to four.
And if, there wouldn't be a four-member board. It would always be an odd number.
Right. Yeah. A co- special permit issued by a special permit granting authority shall require a two-thirds vote of boards with more than five members, a vote of at least four members of a five-member board, and a unanimous vote of a three-member board.
So the, the quantity of votes, in, in answer to your observation, I think you're suggesting that instead of requiring it to be this particular permit, requiring it to be a four-member vote, let's make it a three, because we only have four voting members in this particular case. We can't do that, because mass general law gives us the, the dictates. We have to abide by mass general law. So that's an observation. Please, I hear you.
In addition to that, I think the, the application of that, you know, not 100%, but sitting here listening, I believe that the application of this section that the manager is reciting essentially say, okay, let's, let's take hypothetical. We have seven, let's say we decide we had a seven-member board. I don't believe there's anything in chapter 48 that prevents us from establishing a seven-member board, but we still, in order to issue a special permit or a variance, need a two-thirds vote of that number of seven. So if you have a, an absence or recusal, now rather than a four-to-one vote, a special permit would fail, well, two-thirds of seven with five?
Right.
So you'd have to do the math. It's four-point something.
Would be four-point-two, so essentially five.
Yeah. So you'd have to do the math. But there is the, the potential, even with a greater number of board members, that one person could still, you know, one dissenting vote would serve to deny that special permit.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Jeff Cranford, 39 Oakdale Road. With respect, Mr. Newhouse, I think you're right, by the way, about five, first of all. But you need a lot of lightning strikes to take a seven-member board, have enough recusals to get it down to where you wouldn't have the right. You'd need a lot more lightning strikes to have a seven-member board go to a one person having that sort of controlling stake, I would think. I mean, you'd have to come up with a, a even... I mean, you'd have to come up with a even more rare hypothetical of the situation that became the actuality this year. Where you had one member that was recused, one member that recused himself or was excused from voting, and then the four-to-nothing situation that we had. So I think, I was sitting here while we were talking about alternates, saying, seven-member board, mostly that's going to run four-to-three and five-to-two, but it would have to run five-to-two.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, in the back there? Mr. Hayden?
I'm just wondering why we're going through this exercise, to be honest with you. It's a problem that's been there forever, at every level of government, every level of business. So whatever the most pronounced view is, and how you should go about this, from the, whether we have to follow state's procedure or whatever, that's what we ought to do. Or us to reinvent the wheel here, it just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on this point specifically? Thank you. You know, I think, I don't know, my feeling is, I think we've created a conversation here that's worth having, and frankly, I don't want to close the conversation off. I think it's worthwhile to maybe continue to contemplate this and perhaps revisit it at some date in the future that makes sense. That's how I would like to approach it. I don't want to close the book on it, but I'm willing to turn the page temporarily. And, you know, that's just for the board of selectmen to submit this to town meeting this year. It doesn't mean that at some future date, this could not come up again for contemplation by the town meeting body. But, you know, unless someone, at this table, were of the mind to act on it now, I think that's where we kind of are. And that's where we are. So thank you very much for indulging me on that conversation. I think it was worthwhile to mull it out. Yeah, Mr. Hall, continue, please.
Next, under correspondence, we have information from the Chamber of Commerce. This is the application for scholarships. You recall that Nancy Valli talked about the fundraiser, the race and walk, the funds go towards the scholarship program. Just to note, the 2016 Chamber of Commerce scholarships applications, must be a Wilmington resident, scholarships in partnership with race premier sponsors, security innovations, the Warner Babcock Institute for Green Chemistry, and the Colonial Fireplace Business. Scholarships are, scholarship in memory of James and Antoinette Campbell, and to a student pursuing a teaching degree, and also scholarships in memory of Kelly Aggett Murray. So the application form is available, it's here at the town hall, and we have it in other locations as well.
It is, I don't take personal privilege there. The Chamber of Commerce website is Wilmington, Mass., I'm sorry, WilmingtonMAChamber.com, and it's downloadable from there as well.
Last item under correspondence, we have a letter from Comcast. Essentially, they're talking about offering a consolidated charge, if you will, for their installation, which, one charge of $79.99 exclusive of taxes and fees for a standard installation of Xfinity TV, Xfinity Internet, and Xfinity Voice. And this is for multiple televisions in a home. Obviously, there's certain exclusions, but if there's any questions about that, you can contact Comcast directly. And that is it for correspondence.
We have a single board to consider item, which is the request of town clerk to appoint additional election workers. Mr. Hall?
Yes, with the elections coming up, obviously, I think there's a pretty significant amount of interest in the elections to come, and the town clerk is seeking additional assistance with this. The specific individuals that she's recommending, Christine Murphy, Mary Creath, Rose Wallant, Jacqueline Santini, April Kingston, Janet Lyons, and Lori Delissoya.
I would accept a motion to approve the additional election workers.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. So, which brings us to public comments, and I know there's a number of folks in the room who probably hope for and are looking forward to the opportunity to speak. So I'm going to somewhat repeat myself from a few moments ago. I'm anxious to hear from everyone that wants to speak. But please bear in mind that this is intended to be a question-and-answer type of opportunity, not so much an opportunity to give speeches. So use the time wisely, I guess, if you will, and respectfully of your neighbors. You know, if at some point, I guess, I deem that we're getting off track, or that it's going a little long or crazy, I'm going to ask you to sort of rein it in. And I will make sure that everyone has the opportunity to speak before I call on anyone a second time. So we'll just, we'll go through this, and again, I implore you to engage in the most, I guess, respectful manner that you're capable of. So thank you for that, of course. So it is public comments. Are there comments from the floor? Yes?
This is about any subject you care to comment on.
Can I do?
All right. You can stand and state your name and address.
Sabrina Hewitt, 130 Grobath. This is about the pipeline.
Okay.
I've been working, I'm an activist, I've been working against any pipeline, any store for quite some time. There's been a history of them not cleaning up their messes all across the board, leaving them for the towns to clean up, and then being like, well, what about us? So I see, I saw when Kinder Morgan wanted to put theirs through here, especially along Benevento, which is, they blast all the time dynamite and natural gas. Anyway, I just wanted to kind of get a feel for where you guys stood on this, and the intervenor, especially, the intervenor status.
Yeah, I mean, I'll allow the town manager to expand and articulate the town's position on that, but the town has taken a position of opposition to the plan that Kinder Morgan has, and has gone so far as, as you state, pursue the designation of intervenor. So, you know, there are some limitations, I think, to the level of influence that the town can have over federal environmental, I'm sorry, FERC.
Yeah, I know you.
So we're pursuing every angle, we're participating in the collaboration with neighboring towns who are affected by this, and we're just working the process with our legislative delegation as well. I don't know if, Mr. Hall, you want to have?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. The board of selectmen took a vote, I believe it was back in perhaps December, it was some time ago. Yes, so the town is opposed to the location, it's been mentioned previously, it goes through a very sensitive area, not only near the blasting zone of Benevento, but near some of our drinking water wells. We obviously have a history of being challenged with our drinking water wells, so we want to make sure that the remaining wells are well-guarded, so to speak. And as, with the intervenor status, we have an opportunity to comment throughout the process, and if it becomes necessary or appropriate, we could intervene legally. So, you know, we're doing all that we can at this point to make the case that the pipeline in its current location is not appropriate.
Okay, one last piece. They, the other really interesting piece is that, all this natural gas they're piping down from Canada through everywhere, it's not even going to benefit us financially whatsoever that's going out, that's going out of the country. Just want to throw that out.
Thank you. We have shared in that observation as well, and made those observations known to the decision-makers. So thank you for that. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Scott Grand, 54 Lowell Street, and this evening, chairman of the 4th of July Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me begin personally, and as chairman of the committee, by echoing what the board said, let's keep the conversation civil, online. I know people are upset, we know people are passionate about this issue, but please, let's keep it civil and not target at any individuals. The committee's never operated that way, we will in the future. We've always worked cooperatively with the town. We disagree with the decision, we disagree with the basis for the decision, we certainly have legal rights, we're not, we're a nonprofit, and we're not going to start battling with the town. The process for 2016, as of 9:15 this evening, has concluded. We went through the process, we gave it our best shot, the board of appeals process has concluded. However, through the course of the board of appeals process, the question was posed to me by John Flynn, who was one of the owners of Fiesta Shows, who does all their permitting, why does Wilmington require this to go through the board of appeals? We don't have to do that anywhere else. And I said, that's interesting, John, I don't know. We always have, we've walked in with a license, with your insurance, we've walked in with our schedule, and we got our permit, we got our approval, we got our special permit, up until 2013. So I asked him to provide me with a list of the other municipalities in the area that they play shows in, and what's required. And it's board of selectmen, it's mayor, it's town manager, it's building inspector, in consultation with police chief, fire chief, that's it. There's no board of appeals requirement, no planning board requirement, no special permit. I did further research on my own and found an additional 19 municipalities in the area, their zoning bylaw is silent on the issue. So in light of the public outcry, in light of the enthusiasm for this event, I would strongly suggest that you folks are in a position to put this on the town meeting floor, to revise the bylaw or eliminate that requirement. Thank you.
Jesus, Scott, thanks.
It's warrant, mate.
Yeah, so the town bylaw states that carnivals or activities like the carnival do, in fact, come before the zoning board of appeals.
It's part of the zoning bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
What I'm asking is to give the townspeople the opportunity to determine the review process for the 4th of July celebration.
Thank you, Scott. Listen, that's meat for discussion. I think it deserves a response, and I'm fumbling to find one, so I'm kind of looking left and right, hoping someone else is going to chime in here.
I think that it would make sense to look at some of the information that Mr. Grant has gleaned from other towns. Take a good look at whether or not we're comparing apples to apples. You know, understand, you know, whether the, I heard Mr. Grant say that there were, I think he said 19 cities or towns which don't apparently have anything in their zoning bylaw regarding carnivals. I'm not sure that, well, I am sure that's not the way to go, in my mind, in terms of the special permit granting authority and the process and the parameters for that. You know, let's take a look at whatever information he has and he's willing to share. But I think that's a, you know, the chairman had made reference earlier to the fact that the board of appeals composition and et cetera might be better taken up next year. I guess I'm just suggesting that this recommendation not be taken up right this moment. We're not closing the warrant tonight, let's look at what he's got.
Thank you, Mike. You know, I'm very resistant to the idea of shoehorning anything in, out of emotion, as Ms. O'Connell said, if that's the right word, or because we're passionate about a case that just came before, before the zoning board of appeals. I think it's worthwhile. I think it's as worthwhile as the discussion we just had about the makeup of the board of appeals itself. I quite literally, and you can tell how I'm reacting, that this is the very first moment, it's 9:26, and at 9:25 is the first time it came before me, and I don't know if any of you have had any foreknowledge of it. So I would not be inclined to act on it this evening. If there is an opportunity to wrestle with this and take it up again in time for potentially putting it forth for this town meeting, we would be able to do that. Help me with the timeline.
So what will happen is that at the next meeting of the board on March 14th, you will be presented with a final warrant for the board to sign. The board will then have to make a decision on authorizing that warrant to be posted, and then that will set the stage for town meetings. So I suppose one option would be to create, you know, we had a similar situation, if you recall, a couple of years ago with the Yentile, I'm sorry, with the Whitfield School, where there were two warrants that were presented, one with an article to address the demolition, one without. It's possible, certainly, to create a, one warrant with, that addresses in some manner changing the way the carnival is approved, and then creating a separate warrant without an article to that effect. I would say, just for the record, that Scott did provide me with a list of a number of communities. The first list, there was 21 communities on it, everything from the licensing board in some of these cities to board of selectmen, mayor in some cases, town manager, I guess in one particular case, board of aldermen, building department, and then a separate list more recently that has additional communities. In some cases, there's no mention of carnivals in their zoning bylaw, and then there was other reference to communities that, in terms of the specifics that they apply to carnivals.
You know...
Just my man clarify what I was going to say. The list from Fiesta is 21 municipalities. I supplemented that, researched 21, two of them overlapped, I discovered after the fact, so there are 19. So there's 40 municipalities in this area that do not believe a carnival rises to the level of special permit.
I hear that, I just... You know, I'm reminded of a quote about judges, and, you know, to my way of thinking, the special permit process is, they're administrative law judges. They're, you know, they do many of the same things that judges do in terms of making findings of fact, and it's, I think what you need to be careful of is making sure that that process is somewhat insulated from the issue of the day. And so when we talk about an activity that so many people feel strongly about, I think you need to be careful about taking that particular activity in that permitting process and putting it into a different process that is very susceptible to the public opinion of the day. So I also, and, but again, I'm not, I'm happy to look at that and to try and make an informed and educated decision, but that's a flag that I wave for folks. I also presume that, you know, when, if there are folks who are inclined to pursue that, one of the things that causes me to hesitate is that I believe that this process that's in place, that a carnival can happen there. I believe that. I believe that based on the current composition of the board, I believe that based on the understanding that I have on the hearing, and the motions that were made, and the condition that was offered, I believe that those things can happen, I'm absolutely convinced of it. So, you know, again, I think I'm more inclined to focus on addressing where we're at, making it happen. where we're at, making it happen without change, making wholesale changes to the process. But I'm willing to look at the same information that apparently Mr. Hall has. So we'll, you know, let's look at it.
Yeah. Informed and educated was the phrase that I heard you say, Mike. And that's, I feel ill-informed and uneducated on this topic right now. And I wouldn't be able to act personally. So I don't know if any of, please do.
Well, I want to say, I mean, this board has a proven track record of not taking in information the same night and being asked to make a decision on anything. We've always had a first read. We've had a first indication, and we've taken a vote at a follow-on meeting. So I want to be clear for the record that this is not being treated this way because of the nature of the subject matter. We typically have never been introduced something and have been asked to make a decision, to allow this board the opportunity to do the research, check with town council, have the benefit of the information. I mean, if I had had that information, you know, I'm not asking, but if I had had it beforehand, maybe I could have come in and been prepared for it. But, you know, hearing this just now, you know, I'm not going to make a knee-jerk decision. I'm certainly open and receptive to it. It doesn't come out of left field to me at all, as I was speaking to the origin of how, but, you know, got to look at every, at everything. And I don't think, no other article gets put in with just necessarily a knee-jerk decision. So I think we should be given the benefit of the time to do the proper research and be able to have empirical data in front of us that we can read and look at and think about. And I think that that's what's practical and prudent.
Mr. Chairman, once again, under new business, I like to make comment. I'm listening to what everyone is saying here, and it's a shame that, first of all, if we could do that in a heartbeat, I'd be all in favor of that, just wave a magic wand and let's do it and get it over with. All right? Unfortunately, we got to have to put something at a town meeting and hopefully for the following year, you know? And once again, we take a look at our makeup of what we have, and I have to disagree with some of my colleagues here that I don't believe there'll ever be a carnival at that site with these same individuals on that Board of Appeals. Ain't going to happen. Ain't going to happen. It's just common sense to me. And I'm being realistic about it. It's not going to happen. So whatever choices we have or alternatives, we need to take a look at it, you know? And I've shared with this board for a long time. I've shared with other members. And I got to say, all the members sitting up here are really decent people. They care about the community. And a lot of times, we agree to disagree. But I'm going to agree to disagree relative to this, you know? I don't think I need to be, you know, I'm not an attorney to make a judgment call, but I'm looking at it. And I'm just looking at it and say, ain't going to happen. Ain't going to happen. You know, the carnival's never going to happen at that site with this makeup, considering being, someone being accused and considering what's going on. And I'll be honest, I do take issue on some of the things that has gone on pertaining to the Board of Appeals' decision and the makeup of that, you know? And I do, would like to address that when the time comes, Mr. Chairman. And I've wrestled with it for a couple of weeks now. Thank you.
Is there strong opposition to the suggestion that Mr. Hall offered, or I won't say he suggested it, but he did offer the possibility of crafting two warrants for our next Board of Selectmen meeting, and during the time between now and then, hopefully Jeff and Scott and others could gather and present us with data and information that would hopefully rise us to a higher level of being informed and educated so that we could decide on which version of the warrant to sign in a couple of weeks? I'm sorry.
Let me just be clear. So what Scott presented to me in the first document was, as he noted, a list of twenty-one communities, and this was probably presented to me, I don't know, probably a couple of weeks ago. The most recent list, I believe, was sent over the weekend. And it's a list of communities that identifies the board that apparently has the authority to make the decision. So, you know, I guess the question becomes, for a warrant for the 14th, there would have to be some determination made by someone between now and then as to whether, if there was going to be an article to that effect, does the authority for the approval of a carnival rest with the building inspector, as it apparently does in the town of Franklin and the town of Sagis, for example? Does it rest with me as it does in the town of Westford, apparently? Or does it rest with the Board of Selectmen as it does in the town of Lexington, Bolton, Marshfield, and Topsfield? You know, that's going to be the challenge. I mean, there is, sounds like there are any number of different individuals or groups that could serve in that role.
But on top of that, I think that we need to be able to look at exactly what their zoning ordinance or bylaw looks like. So for example, in Wilmington, and I can't rattle it off off the top of my brain, but in Wilmington, there is a standard criteria that the Board of Appeals is allowed to specifically and explicitly allowed to consider in its determination as to whether or not a special permit is issued, and specifically as it affects the neighborhood. So, you know, that's in our zoning bylaw. So we know that when the zoning Board of Appeals hears a case for a special permit, our zoning bylaw also gives them some guidance in terms of what they may consider explicitly. So if we're, if I'm being asked to endorse, sponsor, include some warrant article tonight that asks me to figure out what's the, who's the sensible, you know, what's the sensible choice to make in terms of an alternative? First of all, if there should be an alternative, who should that be? Well, I've got to figure out how we provide the same kind of criteria. And for example, the town of Wilmington limits the Board of Appeals to give special permits to specific properties, town-owned, faith-based, you know, churches, things like that. There's a list of other properties that qualify, you know, that at a minimum can apply for a special permit and have standing for that. Some of these other towns that don't have those things that may vest that authority in the building inspector, to me, is absolutely not what is in the best interest of this town. You have to at least limit, you know, the kinds of properties that these things can be used for. I mean, as an example, we don't want, at least I don't, I don't want a situation where a property owner who owns four acres of property can just walk into the building inspector's office, you know, rather than developing the property, just have a big carnival twice a year. That, to me, that doesn't make sense. So I guess, you know, my point about making an informed decision is saying in good faith, hey, I'll look at what other towns do. I'm open-minded enough to do that, but there's no way that I'm, and maybe I just misunderstand the manager's point. But if I'm being asked, you know, within the span of the next two weeks, to make a decision on that, I may or may not have enough information, but I certainly can't do it now. And at a minimum, we need to understand, you know, cities or towns who use the mayor, what criteria do they have? What's the minimum requirements in order to be eligible for that special permit or for that license or authorization or whatever nomenclature is used? We can't just say, gosh, things didn't work out the way a lot of people would have liked it to work out, so we need to do something tonight to change the law. That, I don't agree with that. Do we have time over the course of the next couple of weeks? Maybe. Let's, let's look at what we got, you know?
Just to be clear, I was not suggesting that the board necessarily take, make a decision tonight. I guess the point I'm making that I think is in concert with what Selectmen Newhouse is saying, what I have is a list of communities with varying entities that are responsible for making the decision. But, you know, clearly, it seems to me, in order to do this justice, there's going to be a greater level of depth that's going to have to be gone into here in terms of looking at the respective zoning bylaws in these various communities. And I guess, you know, certainly, I just do not have the capacity in the next two weeks to look at forty-one different communities and their bylaws to figure out, you know, what works and what doesn't, and how it applies in these various communities. I mean, a best-case scenario would be to take a few communities and probably look at, you know, what their, you know, how their bylaw is set up and what the process is, but, you know, this...
And then I did misunderstand your point, and I apologize for that. I think what you're saying makes sense, that we'll do our best and take a look, but let's be realistic about expectations in a short period of time and still being thorough.
If I may, to a point that was made earlier by whom I've forgotten, I think it might have been you, Mike. You know, this, the process, the makeup of the Board of Appeals and the bylaw have worked for years. Admittedly, the Board of Appeals had a three-member board for a good portion of all of the years that the carnival was where it was. But the bylaw wasn't an issue, and it was never a concern, and it worked. So the idea of going in and, again, I'll use the terminology shoehorning, or hastily changing a bylaw because of one unique set of circumstances where the bylaw didn't provide the results we were looking for, that doesn't strike me as good government. I wouldn't feel comfortable acting in that capacity. So I would feel comfortable, potentially, acting in that capacity with the appropriate level of knowledge and understanding and awareness of some of the nuances and how some of these other communities, maybe similar-sized in terms of population, type of government, maybe geographically close to us, those kind of things that would weigh heavily in my evaluation of it. But I don't want to knee-jerk react to this as well. I think someone had said that earlier. I'm sorry.
Just in response to that, if I may.
Please.
You talked about the system that's in place, and for so many years, it worked. For thirty-two years, I walked into, myself and my predecessors walked into the Board of Appeals with a copy of the insurance certificate for the carnival and a copy of the Fourth of July schedule, and we left with an approval. That's what happened up until 2013. No one is standing here tonight, including me, asking you to revise the bylaw tonight. We're asking you to give the, I'm asking you to give the voters of town the opportunity to do so.
Karen West, to Birchwood Road, Wilmington. I've been sitting here and I've been listening and yarrowing on the board, on the community board, listening to what everyone's been saying. And I can understand Ms. O'Connell not wanting to get passion involved too much, but passion is what sparks debate. And debate is what we have right here right now. As a voter of the town of Wilmington who elected all of you in to speak for us, I'm asking that you do consider writing a warrant article for this particular reason. I understand that you don't want to rush into it. I understand that your next meeting is two weeks away. Would you please have a special selectmen's meeting to specifically discuss this issue for the town of Wilmington? There's been a huge outcry. You must have heard your townspeople. You must hear them now. All of us are asking you. You five are the ones that can help us. You five are the ones we voted in to ask you for help. I'm joining Scott and asking, please let the townspeople have their say at their own town meeting to determine what they want. I think it's fair.
Just a point of personal privilege, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Just as a correction, Mrs. West, I've never said people shouldn't be passionate. I mean, you couldn't find anybody more passionate, you know, quite frankly, than myself. And I understand that that may stimulate debate. What I said was that the insults and the belligerence and the rudeness and the manner in which people, you know, you, because someone says something doesn't make it true. Trying to make other people look bad never makes a person look good. And in tone and inflection and the manner in which someone presents themselves has everything to do as much with the content of the message that they're delivering. I stand by those comments. I made them publicly. I put them on a social media site as a response. I didn't direct it at any one person. I just, in general, that's my opinion. And just as much as anyone else has the right to their opinion, I have the right to mine. People have the right to their opinion, but they don't have the right to their facts, especially if they haven't done their fact-checking. And there were a lot of pieces of information that were out there that were not factual. That's not directed at you, just in general. So I took a high-road approach. I typically don't try and get on those social media sites and actually respond, but I felt that I needed to in that particular instance. Regrettably so, because I ended up getting subjected to personal attacks as a relative stepping up and actually doing that. But that's, you know, that's neither here nor there. You know, I understand your plea, and I understand where you're coming from. And, you know, I'm supportive of the carnival. I mean, this decision was taken three years ago. I mean, we had from 2013 to 2016 to have discussions about bylaw changes, and now it's being handled all in one night. So, you know, I just want to, I'm not being, you know, that's not a shot at anybody, but, you know, the fact that, you know, I can't make this decision in one hour when we've had three years to talk about it. You know, nothing, the only reason why it wasn't a big discussion before is because another member besides Mr. Vanneman voted against it, and he wasn't put out there for public, you know, ridicule because it was embedded in a multi-person vote against it. You know, we've had three years to get to this point. And I don't take, I mean, I know the amount of hours that the Fourth of July committee has worked. I've had personal conversations with Scott about it. But the fact remains is that, you know, we can't just make all these decisions in one night in one meeting. We've had time between 2013 to tonight to get to this point.
That's why I'm not saying make the decision in one meeting. I'm asking if you guys could please have a special selectmen's meeting to discuss specifically this prior to having to close out all warrant articles. Give the people an opportunity to say, to have their vote, to have their say. That's all.
No, duly noted. I just wanted to clarify some of your previous comments.
Please.
I live at 28 Glen Road. I'm a member of the planning board. One of the things that you would have to do to change the zoning Board of Appeals from having the right to vote for a carnival is you need to address the zoning bylaws related to carnivals. What you can do is actually work with the planning director to get language to actually allow a carnival to be an NP, which means not permitted, in our zoning bylaws and change, because it's an SP, that's why the zoning Board of Appeals votes on it. They vote on every special permit, no matter what it's about, whether it's a conservation subdivision special permit, or it's a licensed special permit for a use, an existing condition use that's no longer permitted in the district you're in. So you have to change the zoning bylaws, language. And I'm sure Valley Gingrich can provide some foresight and information as to how to make that zoning bylaw change so that it's no longer a special permit in our zoning bylaws. A carnival can be a requirement that it's voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the planning board. I mean, you can change things, but you have to change it from being a special permit.
Thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Jeff Grant, Ward 39 Eldale Road. I think it's been answered already, Ms. O'Connell, but I'm certain no one was asking this board to make a decision on this issue tonight. And I serve on a church board. I know we don't like to get hit with something and say, ooh, let's make a decision right now. This is a big issue. It does require reflection. What concerns me is there are apparently two different clocks operating in the air. One clock is kind of obvious. I think we know when the Fourth of July will be the issue. But the other clock is the necessity of closing the warrant items for a town meeting. And I don't mean this disrespectfully to any member of the board or the town manager. Some of you know me pretty well, and you know I'm not saying this rudely. If the clock is allowed to run out on this, then it will have been allowed to run out. If we all find reasons and ways to not do because we think there's another solution somewhere, then we will have not done it. And the clock will have run out, at least for this year, okay? And it's totally fine to say, well, then we'll do this and we'll visit this again next year. But if we allow the clock to run out, if we do nothing, then we will have done nothing and we will allow the clock to run out. So I... nothing, and we will allow the clock to run out. So, I amplify and echo the comments that Ms. West made and the suggestion that Scott made, excuse me, that this be given an appropriate level of attention. I know the time is short. I know the time is scarce, but that this be given an appropriate level of attention so that something can be put at town meeting, so that we can have a full, fine, festive Fourth of July, which is all the people who have been active in this and on social media talking about this are asking for. I don't think an excess of caution here that doesn't get us any result at all is necessarily the best possible outcome, nor do I think incaution is the best possible outcome. I think there's a middle ground here, and I think there's some reasonable people on this board and in this room that can get this done. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
You may.
I have a question, and through you, I guess I would direct it to Mr. Grant. My assumption was, and please correct me if I'm wrong, my assumption was that you were asking us to include in this year's, in the warrant for this year's annual town meeting, a proposed zoning amendment which would, in essence, however it would be, however it would be crafted, that would, in essence, take the special permit granting authority for a carnival out of the hands of the Board of Appeals. I think there's a lot of things you need to look at before you make that decision. But the previous speaker made a point about, you know, in my words, time being of the essence. Is it your expectation and intention that if we bring it to this town meeting, that that leaves enough time in order to alleviate the problem for this Fourth of July and somehow create a process by which that permit would be issued? Or are we looking at the, you know, the time after that, the subsequent years?
Just to clarify, you said that you took me to be seeking to remove the special permitting authority from the Board of Appeals.
Right.
I'm seeking to remove the special permit requirement, because I think it's arbitrary when you start looking at these other municipalities. Is it possible, if correctly crafted and a procedure is put in place, that I think mirrors what other communities do? Is it possible to have this for 2016? I believe it is. But to Mr. McCoy's earlier point, that we'll get the same decision next year, we're already barred for two years based upon the current decision.
Wow. Well, first of all, let me respond as, in terms of a, in terms of a, an intention to somehow effectuate a change that would be available to somehow effectuate a change this coming Fourth of July. And I can tell you that either way, that's an amendment to the zoning bylaw, which requires the approval of the Attorney General's office, which we don't typically get until August on all of our zoning amendments. So, I'm all for the, you know, if folks are asking us, you know, if folks are telling us that time is of the essence, and they are asking us to consider any and all alternatives, I'm all for that. And to do it in a manner which may be able to enable the festivities as they've always happened to happen this year. Based on the requirement of getting the Attorney General to approve zoning changes, I don't see how that happens. We take our April 30th vote, then it goes to the Attorney General's office. We're not going to get the approval of that zoning change until, historically, that ends up being August, so.
Historically. But you could request that they expedite review of that particular item. Or if it doesn't come until August, perhaps the committee can have a discussion about having Wilmington's 2016 Fourth of July celebration Labor Day weekend.
Okay. Well, put it this way. If, if, if folks are interested in solving the problem now, I think there's a couple of steps that can be taken and solve it now. I think that the, the Board of Appeals, as I understand it, the member who ultimately dissented had offered a motion to grant the special permit, subject to a condition. That condition is that a fund be created for specific purposes. As I sit here, I am absolutely convinced that that fund can be created. And with respect to the Board of Appeals, and I know people have different opinions, I understand that. People may have different opinions. I'm telling you, if you're asking me to try and help solve the problem, I believe the Board of Selectmen has already started to go down that path. I think that in January, this board said that we would appropriate funds that would be earmarked, for lack of a better word, to pay for the fireworks display. That would then free up money that historically, as I understand it, the operator of the carnival pays to the Fourth of July committee. We directed the town manager to include that in the budget so that we might be able to effectuate the outcome this coming Fourth of July, on the Fourth of July weekend. That's why we took that step. We had that meeting the same night as the Board of Appeals had their public hearing where this case was, where a vote was taken on the case. So, you know, again, in terms of solving the problem now and having a sense of urgency, I think the board since January has articulated that it wants to try and help so that we can provide a Fourth of July activity that, you know, obviously a number of people want. Now, I think that the Fourth of July activity and the celebration of Independence Day, you know, goes far beyond a carnival, but I also recognize that there's a lot of people who want that. And I also recognize that there's a sitting Board of Appeals that voted three to one not to issue the permit without conditions. All four of them indicated they would issue the, well, the one dissenting vote, as I understand it, offered to grant the permit with a condition. You may, I'm not, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but because I'm addressing my comments to you, sir, I would say you might disagree as to whether or not that condition can be met. I absolutely believe that it can be met. I also agree with Mr. Grant's general proposition that you can't refile an application for the period of two years. But there's an exception to that. The Board of Appeals can hear another case as long as there's a material change to the application. I submit to you folks who are sitting here and to the general public, if we can satisfy the condition that that one member said he needed, and we can satisfy that condition, I think that's a material change that is sufficient to bring this application to the Board of Appeals again. So, I get the sense of urgency. I don't believe that by going to this year's town meeting, while I'm willing to look at that, I don't believe that solves the problem for this year, but...
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry to interrupt. And I understand, you stated that we've been talking about since January, but last meeting we did talk about maybe putting money into a fund. Well, it's been two weeks since that meeting. Has anybody talked to town council to see if we can actually even do it? Can it be done? Or it can't be done? It's very simple. Can it get done or it can't get done?
Well, put it this way. My understanding is that town council has advised the manager under what circumstances an application can be refiled to the Board of Appeals. That fund, I believe, can be created, you know, independent of the Board of Appeals and the applicant. But, I mean, that's, you know, I believe that that's the kind of stuff we ought to be looking at if this board's focus is for this year's celebration. That's, so I'm, I just want to make sure we're talking about two different issues that may be related. One of them is, is there a manner in which this Board of Selectmen can, within the parameters of the law, try and help in assisting with an outcome that people want? I believe there is. I believe there's, I believe there's other options as well, but that's, that's one option.
I'm sorry, yeah. Yes, Scott.
Well, this is 28 Midbury Road. I want to, I want to agree with what Scott said. Maybe at one time, the Fourth of July was not a community event. It was a private event or whatever you want to call it. It's become more than that. Our kids look forward to it. I've got two, one on the way, that are looking forward to attending this. It's become a community event. Just this event should be under your control. If you guys want to deny it, you are elected officials. It should go on you to deny it, not an appointing authority. That's all.
May I? Please.
Okay. If this is a community event, as you indicate, and I agree with you, that the breadth of this celebration over the years has continued to grow, so that it has become, in many respects, a community-wide celebration. And historically, the carnival has been part of that, okay? Rather than messing around with town meeting, which has many obstacles to getting this done now, then why don't we treat this like we treat so many community functions and events? And I think that we have the opportunity, you know, I've heard Mr. McCoy reference a couple of times this meeting, that I don't see how this happens with the current Board of Appeals. I actually think there is a way to do it with the current Board of Appeals. Given the history that we've seen since 2013, in 2013, there were the same five members that exist as of today and whose appointments are valid for, you know, varying numbers of years. You had Mr. Boyle, who's the current chairman. It's my understanding in 2013, for the application for this site, he voted for it. It's my understanding that two weeks ago, whenever it was, he voted for it again. Mr. Boyle's not going anywhere. We have Mr. Barletta. Three years ago, had a perceived conflict, came to this board. We found that he had no financial interest. He heard the case. Three years ago, I believe he voted for it. And again, two weeks ago, he voted for it, although he had in the interim resigned from the Fourth of July committee, thereby curing his potential conflict. You had Mr. Syracusea, who I understand, three years ago, voted in opposition to it, who was satisfied that some, to some degree, the application had changed. Two weeks ago, he voted for it. You had Mr. Verman, who three years ago voted against it, who two weeks ago offered a motion to vote for it with the condition that didn't carry. The other, the other member is Mr. Loud, who, as I understand it, three years ago voted for it, who more recently has a conflict because he works for a company that does business with Fiesta. File, refile an application, and as a matter of fact, the town could do this. The town could file an application with the Board of Appeals and simultaneously issue a request for proposals from any and all carnival operators who are interested. We could do that immediately. We wouldn't have to wait for town meeting, and we would be treating it as the community event that it is. Now, I suspect some people, that's not a preferable route to take because there's some pride of ownership in terms of this event, and understandably so. There are people who have worked on the Fourth of July committee for decades and, you know, have worked hard year in and year out, and that's, that's what they do. But the reality is, if we put out a request for proposals now, we submit an application to the Board of Appeals to hear a case from the town of Wilmington to get a special permit, Mr. Loud doesn't have his conflict anymore. Town of Wilmington puts out an RFP, who knows who the, who the operator's going to be. So, Mr. Loud no longer has a conflict. So, now you have three people who voted for it two weeks ago. You have a guy who has said publicly, if he could have heard the case, he would vote for it. Here's your four votes. So, if we want this to happen now, that's one way to do it. That's one way to do it, that we don't have to change the event until September. That's one way to do it, where we don't have to chase the Attorney General for a decision on a zoning amendment. That's one way we can do it that doesn't require us to make changes either to the process that the Board of Appeals follows or the membership. All we got to do is put it out there and say, "Who wants to do it? How much are you going to pay the town?" That's essentially what we could do. Does that satisfy the sense of community that we're, that we're trying to build in the, in the sense of, you know?
Some operators out there are a little more of a...
Well, I guess that's why in an RFP, we would be darn sure that we get references. You know, it's not a, it's not necessarily a low bidder situation. So, I'm sorry, I know, I directed my comments to the gentleman who had asked the question. I see him raising his hand, being very patient. So, I want to stop talking and give him the chance to talk, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, please, sir. So, just to get, are you proposing that the town of Wilmington is now going to take this over, and you guys are going to go forward with your, you want to, you're asking for bids at this point? So, you guys are going to run it? Is that what you're...
What I, I was, I was responding to your question and your comment about the fact that this is a, this is a community event, and I agree with you. This is a community event. I agree with folks in the audience who have a sense of urgency, that if there's something that can be done, you elect us to try and solve the problem. So, as I sit here, I'm saying to myself, one way to solve the problem is to take away Mr. Loud's conflict. And one way to do that is for the town to apply for a special permit and for the town to put out an RFP. I mean, shoot, we already have the application, right? We have an application with, with proposals and specifications that three out of the four members already looked at. We have specifications that we could create in an RFP just based on the plan that was submitted to the Board of Appeals. So, you know, my thinking is if the town were to, I mean, Jeff Hall knows more about the, has forgotten more about the procurement process than I'll ever know, but it strikes me that we could put out an RFP and give potentially interested companies, maybe there are none, you know, maybe there are none. Maybe I'm, maybe this is a dead end, but it's worth trying, right? So, so we put out an RFP, it's certainly going to take a lot less time to get responses to a published RFP than it will take to go to town meeting. You know, so, so I'm, yeah, I think you make it a community event. What I'm suggesting, we can do that. I'm suggesting that's an alternative.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I'd love to see that happen. I think whichever one of you brings it forward is going to get a lot of support from the town. I'd like to know which one of you would, you kind of have to put that forward.
Well, I mean, I'll bring it forward, but I don't want to, I mean, people need to discuss.
May I ask you a question, Mike, on this point? Because you said that it eliminates Mr. Loud's conflict. Presuming that Fiesta shows doesn't become, I mean, obviously, they're in this request for proposals, I suspect Fiesta would want to stay in the mix.
Well, but if the decision's already been made, if the town of Wilmington submits an application to the Board of Appeals for permission to have a carnival at the Swain School site, and that application, I mean, could be done in a couple of days. The application part is easy, right? So, now you submit that, I'd have to know, I know somebody mentioned earlier they meet twice a month, but typically they don't. They meet once a month. So, you know, there's a publication requirement, probably two times, I think. But my point is, the application before the Board of Appeals, there is no operator at that point. So, Mr. Loud, to my way of thinking, doesn't have the conflict, right? So, we submit the application to the Board of Appeals. We give them the time that they would typically take in order to make a decision. And then simultaneously, we start the RFP process, their public procurement process, with the hope and expectation that there would be some interested parties. If it happens to be Fiesta, the operator that the Fourth of July committee has historically dealt with, well, that's great. We already know that they have the equipment that, you know, that's part of the proposal. If there's others, so be it. I mean, you know, so, so I guess it, it strikes me if we're going to take action now, and that's, then I'm all too happy to bring it forward. then I'm all too happy to bring it forward. But really, we just need the manager to strap it on and get an RFP done in a couple of weeks, you know?
My head's spinning. So the Board of Appeals now listens to a proposal that has a hypothetical layout of hypothetical rides, or suggested, or what we would, what the town would propose, and is asking of would-be carnival operators to be able to accommodate. And I don't know, I know nothing about carnival operators, so maybe there are some that can offer all effectively the same things. So, would the Board of Appeals have enough information, absent a live, an operator of record engaged in the process? Would they have enough information to deliberate and render a vote with that limited information?
Sure, why not? I mean, if, and I think the legal point about applying again to the Board of Appeals, and the application being substantively similar to the previous application, I'm making up numbers, I can't remember how many devices were in the, you know, in the application that the board already heard, but if there were, you know, if there were 12 rides, and then, you know, this application is for 10 rides, I think that's materially different. I think the fact that the applicant would be the town, that's materially different. I believe that you could get back into the Board of Appeals, and legitimately, under the law, have that special permit approved. And I think Mr. Loud is out from under his conflict. And even if he's not, now you've got the community as the applicant, and, you know, even if he's not out from under that conflict, now you've got an applicant that is the Town of Wilmington, that the dissenting member has to look at and say, okay, are you adequately positioned to protect the neighborhood, which is, I understand, to be his underlying concern? So, I don't see why you can't, and it's relatively quick.
Well, I mean, so the prospect of going through the permitting process, we could certainly do that, putting an RFP together, yeah, I mean, there's no question we can do that. You know, I don't know how much time there is for, I would expect that many of these carnival operators, and I don't know how many there are in the region, but they're certainly, if not already lined up, are lining up in the next few weeks, July 4th, because that is, I have to believe, a prime time for them. So, you know, part of the challenge, I would think, would be pulling this together, and getting it out in a timely manner, so that those carnival operators who are serviced this area are not already committed for that period, and are prepared to offer a proposal.
Your, the issue you raise may prove to be true, and that's why I think, hey, you don't give up on the other ideas, too. You continue to try and work with the permit that's in, that, you know, the permit with the condition that the dissenting member articulated. So I guess, you know, you're right, there's no guarantees, but at least as of this point in time, we have an operator who appears to have been preparing until a week or two ago. Folks here don't seem to have given up on the prospect of at least one credible, safe, you know, operator with references would be available, and one would think, the operator that had set aside that time and resources and pieces and devices is probably in the best position to respond to that. But, of course, through a public process, you put it out there, and who's, what safe, responsible company, what do they offer? I mean, you know, I gotta believe, with that kind of gross revenue, there's gotta be some operators out there that are capable and established, and who at least would wanna put in a proposal, you know? So, I guess, you know, your application with the Board of Appeals would be no more than X number of devices, and, you know, up to that number, here's how we would organize them, and there's gotta be a plan that's already part of the, already part of the record, the chairman would have included that. So, we kinda have the blueprint, you know? You just change it up a little bit, to be able to bring it to the Board of Appeals.
My personal feeling on this is that I would rather wrestle with figuring out how to manage this, or figuring out, or working creatively to find a way, if there's a way, to establish the fund, and then resubmit. I'd rather work aggressively on finding a way to solve the problem, than I would spend the next two weeks wrestling with how to make bylaw changes, and get them on the town warrant for this year. I think, I said it before, I don't feel like that's good government, in spite of the fact that people say, well, give the people the opportunity. We have to be, I feel I have to. Before I put any vote in front of the body at town meeting, I feel like I have to feel 100% that it's the right thing to put in front of the town's people. And that doesn't mean I'm in favor or against, it means that every avenue, that it's been vetted out, and that we know what we're doing. And I don't see how we can get to that point in two weeks, and a special Board of Select Meeting isn't going to afford us that opportunity. I don't, that said, that all said, I'm very receptive to exploring the possibility of bylaw changes as it relates to the carnival and the zoning Board of Appeals for the future. But I don't think that takes effect for 2016, and I don't think, I'm not in favor of trying to shoehorn that into this year. So that's my personal feeling on it. If your suggested possibility is one that has merits, and I can't see why it wouldn't, I think we'd be silly not to at least try to take some action on that. But again, that's my feeling.
So as a tactical question, if we were to put an RFP out there for the Town of Wilmington, and that removes Ed Loud's, and just forgive me if I don't have this clear, but if, in the end, the contract is awarded to Fiesta, and he has a direct financial, in other words, if they end up being the vendor that comes out of the RFP process, is that enough to cure the perceived conflict, if Ed Loud takes a vote on the Board of Appeals, with them being the person awarded the contract?
Well, it sounds like the premise is that the, this would go to the Board of Appeals before the identified contractor, if you will, is signed.
Right, and I just wanted to know, timing-wise, that that could be orchestrated in such a way that one happens before the other, so that that perceived conflict isn't in effect, if in the end Fiesta were to emerge as the vendor?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to look at the timelines and all, you know, to see if that's possible, again, without creating a situation where if the, between the advertising that's required for another public hearing, and the, you know, getting on the docket with the zoning Board of Appeals, if it's possible to sequence it so that, you know, when RFPs come in, any decision would not take place until after the Board of Appeals, here's the case, and still have a situation where those, whoever it is that's putting in a proposal on this is, still has that time available. I mean, it, you know, becomes a, you know, ideally, I would think this kind of a process would take place, you know, maybe in October, for the following July, as opposed to now, because again, I, and I don't know anything about carnival operators, and what their scheduling is, but it just stands to reason that carnival operators are looking to tie up, you know, make commitments for July, probably late fall, you know, certainly by December or January, I would think, although, you know, again, I don't know that for a fact.
So, you know, hearing all this, you know, I mean, obviously, there's been a sincere partnership between the town and the Fourth of July Committee. You know, I'm certainly hearing, I think what I hear Selectman Newhouse doing is to try and be a problem solver, and hear a community member state that it's a community event, and he's trying to make this happen for 2016, and I applaud that. So the options for 2016, realistically, would be to do the two-day celebration that Mr. Grant articulated on behalf of the committee, or potentially explore this option, or go back and revisit the condition that Mr. Veerman had, and whether he can renew his motion, or something of that sort. So, you know, has that been exhausted? And then furthermore, if we were to potentially entertain a Warren article for this coming town meeting, it doesn't sound like it's going to have the timeliness to cure having a celebration this year. So let's talk about 2016. We either have the two-day celebration, we get on the route that Mr. Newhouse articulated that we just discussed, or we go back and revisit the status quo, the way things have been with the Board of Appeals complexion, with, you know, the bylaw being what it is, and go back and discuss Mr. Veerman's motion that he put out there with the condition. Do we feel, I'm just asking that question, not spotting anyone, do we feel that that avenue has been exhausted?
I don't think...
I mean, does anyone disagree? I mean, those are the three pillars. It's either two-day celebration, go down the route Mr. Newhouse just said about the RFP, which essentially kinda takes, I opened this up by saying that we've been partnering with the Fourth of July. I mean, like, they have the vendors that they like to use, they have their framework, they have their structure, and I'm not insinuating that Mr. Newhouse is trying to upend that, but that would, that would change that drastically. So, is there a way, you know, to go back to the condition piece and work on that, in which case, the Fourth of July can, you know, they have the pride of ownership of having this event, and I understand, I've been at all the, you know, not all the meetings, but I've watched them, I've heard them, I know the concerns legally, I've talked with Scott. I am not saying that those are valid or not valid, but have we exhausted that option, and is that still open? Because that would be expeditious, too. I'm just brainstorming.
An answer to your question, in my opinion, that hasn't been exhausted, and they don't have to be mutually exclusive. Let's travel two tracks to try and solve a problem, and, you know, it, sure, it puts a strain on, you know, the manager's resources, but I think, you know, I'm not hearing Mr. Howell just say that this can't be done. I understand, it puts some, puts some strain on Town Hall, but I believe they're up to it, and at the same time, I don't think we should give up on that alternative of creating that fund. And I, you know, people have different opinions on that, that's fine, but I say you work on both.
Yeah, but certainly, the pursuing the fund, or creation of the fund, I think is one option that we wanna pursue. The challenge, obviously, that the fund poses, as we've talked about many times in the past, is that, you know, nobody wants to assume liability. The town and its, you know, I've, as I've noted in the past, looked into this, had Town Council look into it, talked to our insurance folks. We are, we, we as the town do not want to be tied to potential liability from property owners who feel aggrieved because they weren't paid the appropriate amount of money for some damage that may happen to their homes.
100% I'm with that, and I, you and I are clear on that. I'm not suggesting it should be the town.
Right, and I certainly don't wanna speak for the July 4th Committee, but certainly the sense I've gotten in my conversations with Scott, is they also have a similar concern. So, you know, is there an opportunity to go, create a third option there? You know, I think there is, and that ought to be, you know, there, we ought to continue to pursue that. Is there a way to create a fund that is not, that's gonna insulate the town and the July 4th Committee from liability? That would certainly be the best-case scenario.
I mean, to, I'm sorry, to me, that's my preference, because that puts the operation of the Fourth of July celebration in the hands of the Fourth of July Committee, and allows them to have the vendors that they're comfortable with, and, you know, the history and all of that sort of, that strikes me as the most preferable. You know, I personally don't feel like that account is necessary, but if it can be done, boy, I think that's the right way to get us to the end result that we're hoping to achieve. Separate from that, or without that, you know, if the town has to put out some RFPs, as Mr. Newhouse said, maybe it's a, we're barking up the wrong tree, or maybe it's just, it won't prove fruitful, but, shoot, you know, it's another avenue to pursue, that we didn't have, we didn't have that avenue 25 minutes ago.
Well, so I guess, one question I would pose, is if we go through the time and effort to go, you know, develop an RFP, and go through a public procurement process, are we the town, am I gonna be running this carnival event, or is this, how is that gonna transpire? Is the July 4th Committee gonna essentially do what it's done in the past, in terms of the dealing with the carnival operator, and, or is that gonna be now a function of the town manager? I mean, how will we...
Yeah, I mean, if you're asking me, because I brought it up, you know, I certainly understand the position of members of the Fourth of July Committee. We're confronted with this predicament now, and I guess, to the extent they're able to continue to help, and are willing and able to help, that would be obviously most appreciated. You know, if that, if, you know, if circumstances are such that that just isn't in the cards, then I guess, you know, we need some help, and we need some people to strap on it. We have people sitting in this audience, who obviously feel strongly about this. I can't believe they'd be the only people, you know, I gotta believe, if we're being asked, as the representatives of this town, to try and solve the problem, we'll do our part, we hope it works out, and then we ask for the help that's absolutely necessary to make something like that a reality, and that, you know, that's the town.
Frank Frizzle, 14 Beacon Street. I'm just wondering, at what time is a good time for you guys to maybe put on a Warren article, whether it's this year or next year, to get this changed out of the Board of Appeals' hands, in your hands, or whatever board you decide is the right way to do it? I mean, you have the parades, it all goes through you, I'm assuming? You have the request tonight that goes through you, I don't see why the carnival couldn't be put through you. But if you don't put it in as a Warren article, it just gets pushed to the next year, and as Ms. McDonald said, now we're another year down the road. Now we're another year down the road. There's never a good time for it, but at some point, I think it should be well done. So whether it's this year or next year, the timing of it, to go get the carnivals and everything else, is never gonna be a good time.
I appreciate that. My feeling is, with all due respect, it's gonna come off sounding the wrong way, but I feel like we're being strong-armed into making a determination or a decision to push that into this year's town meeting. Inasmuch as, I think, the perception is, it would be great, because that would put us potentially in the ability, at least, we'd be able to have the carnival vote taken outside of the zoning Board of Appeals for next, 2017. I'm not prepared to do it, I just don't feel comfortable with that. So I guess, as a frank answer to that question, at any time after the conclusion of this town meeting, throughout the course of the summer and fall, when we can have discussion, deliberation, data, case histories from other towns, we can have a discussion with the planning board about how to designate this activity, you know, and it does mean, we take a year off from this process, and maybe we find another solution in the interim. So I'm of the mind to take this up as a substantive conversation for inclusion on next year's warrant, personally. I don't feel comfortable shoving it into this year.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say, I understand the gentleman, and I understand time is the essence, but that doesn't mean that we, as a Board of Selectmen, can't call a special town meeting in the fall, and still address the issue. We can still do it in the fall, even if we're not gonna make the timeline by May, and still address that issue. But we're looking at a couple of different plans. It almost sounds like we're, and I have to say this, it almost sounds like we're being like Aditya Demulas, we wanna make this thing happen, but then again, we're not saying they're the employees, but they're the volunteers. Without the volunteers, this thing's not gonna happen. You know, I mean, it's nice to ask... You know, I mean, it's nice to ask, to say what we're going to do and all that, but if, in the, in the Fourth of July Committee, they've been doing it for years. I don't know how they truly feel about this whole deal. You know, we've heard Mr. Vasulu make a comment on it, positive to what Mr. Newhouse was saying. I mean, we got to hear from the folks, because we can't, we can supply money, we can do whatever we want to a certain degree, and I can understand the manager's not going to be running it, because I'm sure as heck, we're not going to be running it, obviously. You folks have been doing it forever. We need to hear from the people. We're A.D.T., and we're asking the volunteers. That's what we're doing right now.
There's a lot to it.
Yeah.
Well, there's a ton to it, and I think your point's well made, that it's time.
Not just getting to the first night. There's a lot to that, but running the event, working with the carnival, counting the ticket boxes. I can't imagine you want your town manager, or is designated down there counting ticket boxes? There's just a lot to it.
Let me ask you, Scott, if I may.
Sure.
If hypothetically.
Yeah.
We were to move forward with an RFP to various carnival operators. And in the interim, the town went to the zoning Board of Appeals and got approval by whatever vote, maybe it's unanimous, maybe it's four to one, who knows? But we get approval to run a carnival at that site, with no operator known at that point. And then after that vote, the town vets out the various carnival operators and picks one. We've got an approved special permit, and we've got a carnival operator. I'm asking you, putting you on the spot here, but you did it to us, so it's fair game. Is the Fourth of July Committee prepared to step in and start, and run that event?
I'm one of thirteen, Mr. Chairman, I can't speak for the whole committee.
Okay.
But I will say, in just a response to one thing Mr. Newhouse said, about the town manager strapping it on over two weeks to put an RFP together. You can strap it on and put a, a warrant article together in two weeks.
Mr. West.
Two comments, well, a couple of comments. If the town were to, in essence, procure the carnival, does the town assume liability?
Well, we'd certainly have to obtain insurance from the carnival operator, because our insurance provider does not provide insurance for carnivals. That was clear when I looked at this. So we would have to take all the necessary measures to make sure that we're an additional insured on the carnival operators, you know, insurance policies, and make sure we have appropriate policies and all, and that would be the approach that we would take.
But now, what about this, you know, the neighbors? Is there any liability to the neighbors, which is what the applicant, the one dissenting vote is concerned about? So, because what, what he was saying was, in essence, if I'm not wrong, is that if the Fourth of July Committee would somehow form a fund, or work with somebody to form a fund for this magical $20,000, that would help liability on immediate abutters. Would the town assume liability for immediate abutters?
No, we've, I've made it clear that I am not going to assume the liability for abutters. The, you know, these abutters have homeowners' insurance. The fact of the matter is that we've had one incident in 1989 where somebody's window was broken, and we've, this event has run for 32 years at that location, or at the location across the common. But be that as it may, I know that's the condition that's been put out, but it's not something that I'm going to recommend. If the board wants to direct me to do something else, then, you know, I guess that, you know, I'll do that, but I just don't think it's in the town's best interest to be assuming third-party liability for neighbors.
Where are you going with this, Mr. West? You're fighting your own argument.
No, well, I guess what I'm thinking about is that if you are going to, if the town's going to spend money for a carnival, or any, any of the associated expenses, why not contribute to the, why not somehow assume the liability? I'm just thinking, is, is there a way to do that?
We assume the liability by virtue of having the best police force in, in the region keeping us safe.
And the other, the other comment I just wanted to make real quick is that, getting back to my, and again, I realize it's getting laced, I'll be quick, is that when I was talking earlier about putting one or two members onto the Board of Appeals as associates, I would be preventing, that, that type of article would be preventing the discussion you guys have been having regarding, well, if we do it this way, we can get this person's vote, if we do it another way, we can get another person's vote. Again, if you allow alternates onto the board, and I, I think, I think we'd be prudent to revisit the argument, because the thing is, is that you're going to have the same issue next year. Unless we have, as Mr. McCoy suggested, a special town meeting to discuss what the July activities are for the following year, you're going to run into the same issue at an annual town meeting next year. But again, I, I would appreciate, give consideration to adding associates to the Board of Appeals. It might help the situation. Thank you.
It might. I can promise you that we're, that tonight, we're not going to add alternates to the Board of Appeals. I know that that will not occur. I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I'm fairly certain, when we concluded that conversation earlier, there was zero receptivity to, to including that, unless there's any change. I see none. Thank you, though, Mr. West.
I mean, I, I think we still need to work on the option of, you know, this, addressing this issue of a fund, and I can certainly look at putting together an RFP and, and, you know, I'll have to go through the timelines to see how that would work in terms of coordinating it with a zoning Board of Appeals meeting, and, and, you know, look at whether it seems reasonable to expect that anybody, any carnival operator is going to, you know, be available to sign on.
A question in response to the manager's comments. Does it make sense for the board to authorize, not direct, because of whatever questions the manager might still have, does it make sense to authorize the manager to proceed with a request for proposals and an application on behalf of the town to the Board of Appeals that would enable us to obtain a special permit for a carnival at the Swain School site, and to have Fourth of July festivities? I think if we give that authorization, but not that direction, it will enable the manager to move as quickly as he's able to address the questions of, you know, urgency and the points of urgency that people have made, and continue to figure out logistically, how does he do it? Is it, is it a two-night event? Is it a three-night event? I mean, what may be the, and, and I don't know, it takes more, more minds than mine to tackle this, but, I mean, it might be that we plan a two-night event or a three-night event, you know? That in of itself is a material change from the application that's already been heard by the Board of Appeals. And yet, it still gives volunteers, whether it be the current Fourth of July Committee, others, service organizations, any potential volunteers, the ability to hone in on a couple of dates, you know? And I know that the Fourth of July Committee has announced they're committed to that, to that two-night event, even without a carnival. So I'm, I'm trying to suggest that we can fashion a, a motion to authorize the manager to be able to move forward with this, without having to wait two weeks, or whatever it is, until our next meeting, without the necessity of calling a special meeting. Certainly, if the chairman sees fit to call a special meeting, would, you know, the membership is historically fine with that. We, we get, we get the sense of urgency. But, you know, if we're asking the manager and others to take on a, you know, a significant task in a short amount of time, let's give them the green light to go do it. That's my thinking.
Thank you, Mike.
Thoughts? I wanted to make sure I, that I gave folks and, okay? Yeah, please, Scott.
Just to that, Mr. Newhouse, in our experience, there are not functioning carnivals out there that will come for two or three days, because they're giving up a five-day site elsewhere. They just won't do it.
Makes sense.
And I, and I guess, going down this route of reapplying to the Board of Appeals, the town reapplied. The dissenting member of the board looked at Mr. Hall several times and said, if you don't do this, if the town doesn't do this, I'm not approving this, which I understand. I understand that was his position. What, on what basis do you think, as you said earlier, that he would have to look at the town, which he did, and now give a second, a different opinion?
Well, what I'm suggesting is, if the town is the applicant, I believe you'll now have a full complement of five, five board membership. That's, that's, that's really what I think is driving this. Rather than changing the process and changing the membership for a situation that's fairly rare, and given the time constraints, let's change the applicant, you know? And, and I think by changing the applicant and not being on a contract with a specific operator, I think the Board of Appeals' membership is free to entertain that application, because any operator in the world potentially could end up getting the, the award.
So from a timeframe standpoint, how, how long would that take?
Well, I gotta believe, again, I mean, let's, let's look at the calendar, figure this out.
Yeah, the Board of Appeals next meets on March 9th. There's no way that there would be, we could get this on the meeting for March 9th. So earliest it's going to be, whatever the meeting in April is.
They'll be twice a month?
No, they meet once a month, so March, March 9th or March, yeah, it would be, I believe it would be April 6th. No, no, actually, it would be, so their meeting is the second, I believe it's the second Wednesday. So the second Wednesday in April is, what is that, the 13th?
Yes.
So that would be the earliest that this could get on their agenda.
Well, again, I, I know that, I realize that there are publication requirements, but there are five Wednesdays in March. You know, I don't, I don't want to be presumptuous with other people's time, but I'm wondering if the chairman of the Board of Appeals would schedule a second meeting for late March. You know, these are the kinds of things where I don't want to, you know, burden you with some kind of motion that dictates these things, but those are the kinds of things you can figure out.
Right.
Yeah, if I, if we can call a special Board of Selectment meeting for specific purposes, I'm sure they can do the same.
Sure, yeah.
Definitely.
So.
You shouldn't be hamstrung by some, some once-a-month requirement.
I would say, the S is calling me daily. We're getting calls, and I won't name the other cities. We're getting calls from this major city. How much longer before you tell us except the other cities? So time is of the essence. And, so just so I'm clear, which, which tracks are, are we pursuing, or are you folks going to pursue at this point? Is it two or is it three?
Well, which, which are the?
It's the fund, just the RFP. And the warrant article. Correct?
Yes, thank you.
So, so the board is looking for, between now and I guess the next meeting, an analysis of all of these various communities and how they deal with carnivals, and an RFP put together. Is that my understanding?
I.
And to address the fund issue.
I would personally, recognizing limitations of bandwidth, I would personally, if we had to make any sacrifices among that list of priorities, my personal feeling is, we detract or pull off of that list the, the evaluation of the various communities and how they establish the permitting of carnivals. I think that is a, an ample conversation that we can have at a future date and put on next year's town meeting. And I'm sorry, I think that's probably going to be, strike a lot of folks as an unpopular decision, but I think.
Or a special town meeting.
Or a special town meeting, very well. Yeah, that's, and I, I think that was a valid observation. Thank you.
Especially in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
Mr. Chisholm. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to weigh in on that and say that I, I agree with those priorities, although I would say to the manager, obviously, because the Town Hall is so involved in the process, that for folks to try and tackle the fund issue, we need to communicate with the manager. But I don't see that as his responsibility. I mean, I think if there are, you know, folks who can make that happen, they'll, they'll come to us and make it happen. And so, I, I mean, if, if people are interested in solving the problem for July 4, July 1 through July 4, 2016, I think we owe it to the community to try the RFP process, to try the application before the Board of Appeals, recognizing that's a lot of work for the town administration, recognizing the monumental amount of work that Fourth of July Committee members and other volunteers have done over the years, and that's a tall order, but we're being asked to do our part. So I, I guess that's all we can do, you know?
I'll say this, I'll commit, as a member of this board, whether I sit in the chairman's seat or any other seat on this board, that the issue of whether or not it makes sense to, to change the special permit requirement of carnivals and fit them into a different voting process, fit it into the Board of Selectment instead of the zoning Board of Appeals, or some other body, we'll keep that on the radar screen. I'm not going to let that slip away and be in this same spot next year going, oh, shoot, we forgot to bring up the special permit discussion. I'll, I'll make sure that that doesn't slide off. And as Mr. McCoy so astutely made the observation, and I'm glad he did, it's entirely conceivable that a special town meeting, in spite of the fact that that's a bit of a, a task to organize and execute, could be called for the fall and, and put things in place potentially for next year. That's an aside. I, I believe that from a priority standpoint, Mr. Newhouse has opened up an avenue here that's worth exploring, and it, it puts a lot of pressure on Jeff and his team, and I hope that Scott and your team will collaborate to the extent that it, that it's helpful and worthwhile and moves the ball forward. But I, I think these are, these are steps that can be taken. So, I'm sorry, anyone else have thoughts on this subject specifically? So, Mike, you had started to suggest that a motion might be a prudent step to take at this point, to authorize the manager to author a, a proposal and a...
Yeah, I move that the board authorize the town manager to formulate a prospective request for proposals to enable the town to sponsor a carnival at the Swain School location and to provide a fireworks display for the, for a period in, in July. Does that, does that give you enough, without hamstringing you?
Yeah, so, so we're talking about an RFP for both a carnival and the fireworks? So there's a cost to the carn, the fireworks, which is roughly, as I'm told, somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000. I, I'm presuming, hopefully I'm right, that there's not a cost associated with the town procuring the services of a carnival vendor?
Well, I can't, here's what I was thinking. I know that the Fourth of July Committee has graciously indicated that they intend to pay for the fireworks, and that, that's, that's great. But I know that we're also, have included the, the $25,000 in the budget. So I just don't know if, if that, if that game plan for the Fourth of July Committee will hold true. I'm all for letting them, you know, subsidize the carnival, the fireworks, if that's possible. But I, I just, just don't know what's possible for them, and I, I think that, you know, members who are here don't want to speak for their entire committee. So I guess I'm, I'm authorizing, but the intent of the motion would be to authorize you to look at any and all of those things, with the expectation that you'll figure out which part of it becomes necessary. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure.
I'll offer that as a motion.
Second?
Good, a motion made, and seconded. Parliamentarily, I, I have to say, is there more discussion? But I can't imagine how there possibly could be. Is there more discussion? All in favor of Mike's motion? We have four. We have four and one abstained. Better get to work? Thank you again, Mike, for offering some creative solutions. It may not be perfect, folks, but it's, it's trying, we're trying to move the ball forward. New business and committee report, actually, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's do new business and committee reports. I'll start down to my left at Judy's station.
I just wanted to say that the Antifa Development Committee did meet last week, and the town manager will be awarding a contract. I'm going to not give any specifics on that, not for lack of transparency, but I know that the manager's office is working on an official press release, and I'd like to give his, you know, him the rightful opportunity as, as the, you know, awarding authority for the town to be able to do that in the manner that he deems fit, but we are making progress, and that project is going to be officially getting off the ground, and we've talked about a groundbreaking ceremony and other activities, and at a, at a later date, we'll certainly be updating this board, and the intent would be that we will be giving a committee update at town meeting as well, so that would probably be another opportunity for you to hear more about the project. So we're, we're on our way, and stay tuned for more public announcements.
Thank you, Judy. It's exciting progress. Thanks for your leadership on it. Mr. McCoy?
Oh, right now, I'm good.
Mr. Smagley?
I guess I'd just like to say, it, it's hard to sit up here and not be able to talk on certain issues. Once you abstain, you're not supposed to partake in any votes or say anything about either side, but I guess I could just say, I'm glad that we're all working towards the same thing, and I hope we as a town will have a, a celebration this 4th of July to include a carnival. Is that breaking any rules?
Nah, it's okay, you're a short time.
I think so.
Thank you, Lou.
That's it.
Mr. Newhouse?
I'm all set, thank you.
Very well. I too am all set, so I'll ask Jeff to highlight some important dates.
Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow night, this same room, 7 o'clock, regarding police and central dispatch. Finance Committee meets again on Thursday, the 25th, here at Seven Veterans Services Town Clerk Historical. Finance Committee on March 3rd with the Shawshank Tech. March 8th, here with the Wilmington Public Schools. Next selectmen's meeting is March 14th. The March 15th is the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing, which will be a review of the warrant articles for the annual town meeting in the town hall auditorium at 7:00 PM. March 17th is a facilities master plan meeting, right here in room 9, 7:00 PM. Also, March 17th is the registration deadline for rookies T-ball.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you all and good night.